Let me know when you're ready, Alison. Are you ready? You're muted, Alison.
Yeah, I know. I was unmuted on purpose so that we didn't do that YouTube interference thing when it starts.
Not a problem. We're on.
But we evaded it anyway.
All right, good. Well, welcome to the town of Camden Select Board meetings, February 9th, 2021. Before we start our agenda, I want to remind everybody that we are operating on the Zoom webinar format. And in that format, anybody who would like to be an attendee to the meeting, just like attending the meeting in person, can log into the link, which is located at the top of our agenda, and the agenda courses on the town website. In addition, we would respectfully ask if you are attending to make sure you change name to reflect your name, because we're going to try to be more religious with requesting individuals' names and residency when they do make comments. And attendee, as an attendee, you can certainly ask questions and try to get to them, or you can raise your hand to try to be brought in as a participant to ask a specific question during an agenda item. And when you're finished, you will be transitioned from participant back to the attendee category. So with that, we will head off onto our agenda, the first time, which is public input on non-agenda items. Do we, I don't think we have any, let me just check. We don't, okay.
So, and this is where we wanted to probably check real quick to make sure that there are no hands raised in the...
Kevin's was raised, but that was an earlier hand that I spoke to him.
Okay, so I will cover that.
Yep. So I don't see any, Alison, with that, we'll proceed to item two, which is an update on established priorities, specifically a presentation slash discussion by Kevin McGinnis on EMS project findings and next steps. So if we could bring Mr. McGinnis in, and who else was supposed to be brought in, Audrey?
Tom Judge.
Who?
Let me see if I can see his name on the list.
It looks like Kevin's already in.
He is. I see him, but I see him in the attendees.
Oh, here we go.
He's on the screen.
Yeah, he was on the screen just because we allowed talking before, but.
Okay.
There we go. Now he should just give him a second to activate the video.
Thank you.
So as soon as he does, I'm going to do Tom's, or sorry, Kevin's introduction.
Okay, sure.
Because that's an awkward thing to have to do for yourself.
I would agree with that. We're just waiting for...
If you want to introduce me at any point, Audrey, you're more than welcome.
We're gonna, we're gonna...
Your bio, and I'd be happy to read it.
We may excuse you, but there's Kevin. Go ahead, Audrey.
All right, so by way of introduction to this project, in order to, you know, do the level of assessment and analysis that was impartial and unbiased, we reached out originally to Tom Judge, who a lot of people know around here. Tom's got a long history as a paramedic in this region. He lives in Port Clyde. He worked for the St. George Ambulance Service and oversaw a lot of changes there. And most recently, he's transitioning into retirement as the Executive Director of Lifeflight. And Tom was very helpful when our communities and the hospital system reached out to him for some help, kind of looking at our options in terms of EMS services and how we might like to plan for the future. And Tom put us in touch with Kevin. And Kevin, he's got a Master's of Paramedic Science. That's the MPS abbreviation, I believe. And he's a retired paramedic chief. He's been an EMS system builder and active emergency medical care provider since 1974. He earned undergraduate and graduate degrees in healthcare and hospital administration. Kevin has been a paramedic chief for volunteer, private, and hospital-based ambulance services, and a hospital emergency department director. He served as main state EMS director, trauma manager, and community paramedic coordinator over a period of more than 20 years. And in 2001, he coined the terms "community paramedic" and "community paramedicine." And today, over 200 communities utilize some form of community paramedicine. He also authored the National Rural Health Association book, The Rural and Frontier EMS Agenda for the Future and its follow-up, The Rural and Frontier EMS Tactical Plan 2020 to 2023. And he created the nationally-recognized Informed Community Self-Determination Process. And elements of that, he used for the work that he did for Camden, Rockport, Lincolnville, Hope, as well as Penn Bay Medical Center. And that's for evaluating emergency medical services, and he's evaluated ambulance services throughout Maine. So we've been very fortunate to have Kevin and his team and Tom helping us out with this project. So with that introduction, I'll turn it over to Kevin with some support from Tom.
Great. I'm trying to share my screen here. Can you all see that?
Yes. There you go.
Super. Bring this up to a slide. There we go. Just one note is we're starting into this. Thank you very much for having me here to, it's my pleasure to update you on this project. The packet that you have that has a slide program in it has a bunch more slides that I'm going to actually show tonight. We could take a couple hours and go through this project, and you don't have that time. So there's some extra slides in there, particularly around sort of an EMS 101 introduction, slides that I won't touch on tonight. So why this, why the project? Well, you all have been involved in discussions about this before, but one of these mobile health services came in as the 911 contractor for EMS in 2013. They'd actually been at Penn Bay Medical Center prior to that, doing inter-facility transports. They were one of the larger EMS agencies, a private, family-owned service in the state. Number of issues kind of led to where we are here, led to the project, and where we are here tonight. When we went, encountered 2013, and Northeast came in, they were replacing Camden First Aid. Two very different types of services, a large private service and has a number of access to a lot of resources, economies of scale, and that sort of thing. Versus though, a small community-based ambulance service with local characteristics. People knew most of the folks that would get out of the ambulance to come help them, time in and time out. There are also some tension, not hostile tension, but just tension between the folks using those resources. The hospital is obviously looking to Northeast to do a quick response when they have somebody that needs to go from the hospital to another hospital on an inter-facility transport. Those same crews and vehicles are used at one point or another for 911 response. So that sort of sits in the background. There have been no doubt, there's been tension of sorts, and some communication disconnects, perhaps failures to follow through on problems that people have cited to Northeast, between Northeast and fire service, town officials, clients, and others have presented some problems over the past few years. Clearly, we know that the fire service has a desire to have, be able to provide more EMS capability and to be a more efficient all-emergency service provider in the area. And even to operate the EMS agency, there have been public presentations on ways to do that through a fire service EMS response. And there have been problems reported over the past few years of response timing, and it's concerns over using Rockland Fire for mutual aid in the area. There have been incidents that have presented problems or complaints, concerns about staff performance at Northeast, their ability to interact effectively with patients, and this is some of them, not, obviously not all of them, but some that have come to the attention of Audrey and you all and other officials, and also staff attitudes in doing patient interaction. And some concerns about visibility and the extent of visibility and participation in community events and services. But one of the things that's key to what we're doing here now is simply trying to figure out what the right EMS choice is for the area and Penn Bay going into the future. And that's why you all funded it along with Rockport and Penn Bay Medical Center. New contract year presents a timeframe, sort of urgent timeframe for us, July 2021. And we have this big COVID thing going on now and have for, as long as you know it, that have made things more difficult for us in a lot of different ways. But makes it really hard to plan what you're going to do for a complex service like EMS, financially, operationally, over the next couple of years. Let me just do an aside about getting everybody on the same page as far as EMS terminology is concerned. EMS professionals play a lot of different roles. We're most familiar with them climbing out of ambulances to do medical care based in response to 911 calls. They also do maybe going to a scene and providing care until the ambulance gets there as an emergency medical response or first response person coming in a fire truck or a personal car. They do inter-facility transports, so the patients at local hospitals that need more advanced care can get it at a larger hospital. And they do some things today increasingly in the community, not on emergency calls, but on non-emergency, primary care types of things to keep patients from needing to call the ambulance by having their chronic conditions get worse. Licenses in Maine, EMS licensees in Maine mimic what is general practice around the country. There are four basic license levels. At the most basic life support level, emergency medical responders are trained in about 60 hours or so, sort of in first aid to do care, provide care until the ambulance gets there. Emergency medical technicians are the entry level for ambulance attendant, essentially, and have about 150 hours of training in very basic life support and being able to do oxygen delivery, splinting, breathing control, CPR, helping patients administer some of their own medications and administer some basic medications like Narcan for overdoses. Advanced EMTs are about double that amount of training again, and simply expand the ability to do things like cardiac monitoring, airway intervention to maintain, preserve airways, and actually doing some more medications. And then the sort of top of the line is the paramedic level, which is a full-purpose 2,000-plus-hour training program plus associate's degree in most cases, provider, and they're very general-purpose, all-purpose EMS intervener. Just as a note, a minority of 911 calls in most communities require the advanced EMT or paramedic, maybe about 40% of them. That varies with the age of the community and whatnot. This is just a very simple way of showing how much each level can do from far left, where you have emergency medical responder and EMT doing a number of basic things, which grow larger with advanced EMT at that level. And then at the paramedic level, you have over two dozen medications that paramedics administer in life-threatening situations. Another characteristic that people aren't usually familiar with in EMS is that there are a variety of organizational types that sponsor or finance EMS agencies in Maine. You can see the list here. Fire services predominate in providing first responder or ambulance service, like in Rockland Fire Department. There are a number of nonprofit, independent communities EMS services, like St. George. There are independent municipal EMS services, a handful of private EMS services like Northeast, and then some hospital, college, and tribal-based services. Again, why this project? Well, clearly, as you know, it follows on months, if not years, of discussion among public safety agencies. We've seen some fire-based EMS proposals at some public meetings to do, take over EMS provision in the area. Tom Judge has participated in most of those discussions through the couple of years that they've occurred, and has kind of had, served as a volunteer facilitator. Again, the complications that we face in this, or the pressures are simply a new contract year beginning July 2021, and the difficulty of doing things in the environment of COVID. The staff for the project, Tom continues on as our volunteer facilitator and participates in steering group meetings. I'm the consultant, and I'm helped by two fellows, one who is a service chief in Western Maine and in county-wide EMS service, and then a colleague in California who's a specialist in contract administration, EMS planning, request for proposals, anything that has to do with the business end of public and private relationships in doing EMS. The steering group is, as you see, Audrey, is one of the members on that, as are some representatives of Rockport and Penn Bay Medical Center. And then Hope and Lincolnville were brought in to provide representation of those towns as well. Steering group meetings have been ongoing now for two, three months, often on a weekly basis, most often on a weekly basis. The rest of the project, and I know I've conducted interviews, and most of you know that we have done interviews with over 40 stakeholders as recommended by the steering group. It consists of town officials and fire service, police colleagues, and other stakeholders of Northeast, business owners, and that's those sorts of folks, to get a sense for a picture of how Northeast is perceived in the area. We've done an inspection of Northeast's mobile health services, their facilities, vehicles, standard operating procedures, you name it. We've tried to look at it and included that in our review. We've looked at performance data primarily from Maine EMS, but also from Knox County Dispatch and from Northeast itself. And you looked at data that would allow us to compare performance with other similar communities and similar EMS agencies in other places in the state, such as Rockland and Belfast. We've also taken a look at Maine EMS, the licensing agency for EMS in the state, the regional EMS licensure and quality improvement folks. And looking back over the time that Northeast has been here, for any incidents involving professional misconduct, complaints, or other actions that were pending or taken on licenses for the service or for its staff. We invited Northeast and local fire service leaders to submit suggestions for alternative operational proposals, or alternative operational models for conducting EMS in the four towns. We got some from Northeast, we got some from fire service leaders, and we incorporated those considerations in the options that I will discuss in a little bit. And we also looked at some other models that we're aware of, that are mixed models, mixed fire and private models, such as our In Brewer with Noonan Light Health and Brewer Fire, and Delta Ambulance and Waterville Fire in Waterville, as well as some of the tax districts, ambulance tax districts, there are a couple of them in the state. The steering group in its meetings have had a number of deliberations on the way we would proceed. I won't go into those in detail unless they're questioned. But primarily focused over most of the meetings in developing a series of options, it turns out there were about 10 of them in total, to consider bringing to decision-makers, select boards, town meetings potentially, ultimately, after having pared them from 10 down to hopefully no more than one or two. They considered all of the pros and cons, the cost, and very importantly, the likelihood for success in the current timeframe as it faces us and the COVID environment, for accomplishing something meaningful. I'm going to take you through some of the findings here on the data that we looked at, the interview process, and then the development of those options and the selection of an option or two. The first is an eye chart. I realize that, and I don't intend to get into it in any detail, just to say that two sets of data that we did look at were the way that Northeast has collected data in reporting its compliance with the town's contracts. And there are two specific issues in the contracts that are underscored. One is, does a paramedic get on calls that require advanced life support? And there's a requirement in the contracts that they do that 95% of the time. Long story short, yes, they do, by what's reported, this is 2019 through 2020, the reports on a month-by-month, quarterly basis, showing that indeed they have met those contractual requirements. Similarly, they report on average response times. And average response times take a number of different forms, depending on what you choose to use. And in fact, they've changed in definition over the past couple of years between Northeast and the towns. But this one slice between July of 2019 and June of 2020 shows that the specified contract requirements from nine to 19 minutes, depending on the town, were met, contractually met in that time period, using that data measurement. I looked at, we looked at a different set of data, Maine EMS data as well, to basically get a sense for whether Northeast's performance in this setting is reasonable, is comparable to similar services and similar settings, and just to get a sense for whether it kind of meets the straight face test from an EMS expert point of view. And you'll see that response times that we looked at in 2019, Northeast going to Camden and Rockport were in the neighborhood of eight to nine minutes on a mean average. When you look around at similar services in the area, Rockland responding into Rockland, and mind you, that's a very small response area in comparison to Camden and Rockport, which is a greater geographic area, has a mean average of seven minutes. Belfast response into Belfast, slightly larger, quite a bit larger response area than Rockland, 11 minutes. So all of those responses are within a similar ballpark. And we talk about looking at going to the more rural areas in our response area, Hope and Lincolnville, going to 16 to 19 minutes. Again, when you look at Belfast going to similar areas like Northport or Morale, you're looking at 17 and 18 minutes. The reason that I have something, a column that says 90th percentile, that's another way that you can look at averages by using what are known as fractiles. And all that means, and for instance, in the top line, Northeast going to Camden, how you read that is that 90% of the time, responses happen under 14 minutes. The reason that's useful, more useful than looking at mean averages, is that that immediately identifies a 10% of calls that you probably ought to be looking at to see what's causing those to be outliers, or to be above that 90th percentile. The mean average doesn't steer you to those outliers to do mitigation and mitigation kinds of planning to overcome effects that may cause responses to be extended. When we looked at the interview process, there were a number of things that became fairly apparent. There are issues on a couple of different fronts with how Northeast is dispatched and how that dispatch process interacts among MedCom, which is the Bangor Located Dispatch Center for Northeast, Knox County Communications, which is obviously involved in 911 dispatch, and an app that is used by public safety agencies in the area to keep track of what crews and vehicles are available for response. And there's some frustration with that, because it results in people having different understandings about what crews are available, or feeling like they don't know what crews are available at any given time. And they also feel that because of that process, there may be some differences in interpretation of how fast ambulances are responding. On a couple of different fronts, what started off in 2013, 14 as fairly routine close communications between Northeast and its leadership and the hospital emergency department staff in managing inter-facility transports, as well as with the fire leadership and other colleagues in public safety and town leaders like Audrey and Bill Post and others. It started off fairly well. It's degraded significantly in recent years, and that's created a problem. The, there have been...
Hey, guys, is Kevin's auto cutting out for anybody else?
I'm sorry?
Your audio was cutting out, Kevin. I'm just curious if it's just me, or if it, maybe it's on your end.
Okay.
I think it's just you, Taylor.
I'm sorry. I'm not, I'm not hearing any cut out on my side.
I'm not hearing...
Thanks.
The wonders of technology, eh?
Yeah. Sorry to interrupt, Kevin, you're doing great.
No, 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 no problem, no problem. There have been, it's sort of an interesting current that runs under comments that we got in interviews, from some of the fire service colleagues that respond with Northeast, as well as some of the emergency department colleagues that work with Northeast when they bring patients in or take patients out to other hospitals. And that is, you know, Northeast is not very consistent in its professionalism, the staff being consistent in its professionalism, not like Rockland Fire. And there are some clinical deficiencies that have been cited. So that was kind of, that kind of peppered a number of the interviews that we had. Although I got to say that predominantly from fire responders to hospital staff, to particularly stakeholders in the community and some community leaders, the feedback was largely positive, especially from leaders in town government, that, you know, there are these issues that do come to you. So those clearly did show. There was a problem of mutual aid being used almost once a week in 2019, less so in 2020. And Rockland Fire has reported that since then, through 2020 and to date, the problem has gotten much, much better. It's not being used as much. Once a week is a lot. It's not horrible, but it's more than a service would like to have. There is, it would be noted, an $800 penalty every time Northeast uses mutual aid. They have to pay Rockland $800, and they lose the billing on that patient. So there is a, quite a penalty for them. There was a note on a lot of, a lot of the interviews, people said, well, we know Northeast was suffering staffing shortages. That caused a lot of mutual aid dependency, particularly in portions of 2019 as a particular period, but also in the past couple of years. Those seem to have improved in the last year and haven't been mentioned as much by the people reporting this. One thing that, that kept coming back as a sort of a reason for a lot of these issues was there was simply, there was a lack of a supervisor at Northeast's base, Rockport base, over a period of about three years. There was no consistent one supervisor there. And clearly, the impact on staff conduct, staff clinical performance, operational response, and other things are going to suffer when you don't have that kind of direct oversight at an operational base. The data findings, as I sort of hinted at, we don't see that there's a huge response reliability issue, but we do see that there is a need for absolutely getting every... But we do see that there is a need for absolutely getting everybody on the same page with what is expected of the ambulance service or any ambulance service. What performance measure, is it going to be an average? Is it going to be a fractile? Are you going to use? And then what do you have as penalties? Now, you use averages, you have penalties in the contracts. The penalties have never been invoked because there apparently haven't been any violations of that contractual agreement. But there's still disadvisance fashion with how that's written and for good reason. I think the folks on my team are going to suggest contractual language that hopefully will address some of those things. There is in the data though, given the response, particularly to Hope and Lincolnville, but everything can be improved, especially with those, the outliers that there may be for longer responses. A reason to have a first responder service in the four towns. This is something that's not a new concept. Camden First Aid had first responders to a degree in Hope and Lincolnville as members of Camden First Aid. And it was the intention, I understand, for the last eight years for the first response capability to have been developed in the four towns. So that you have people that can respond until the ambulance gets there in case there's a time dependent emergency, critical emergency occurring. Finally, no, I said that there have been no, according to Maniums, there have been no service or licensed personnel performance incidents. So we get down to the options. And in my way of approaching a service evaluation, what you end up looking at is basically, do we continue on the way we are or do we provide the community with an option? And so the steering committee or steering group has been busy looking at exactly those things. And we've essentially put those 10 options that we looked at into six buckets. Excuse me. The first was status quo. Essentially, right now, the contract with Northeast is about $300,000. You could simply, with a CPI based increase for doing business at $311,000 approximately, continue their service over the next year or two each year without any changes at all. The steering group rejected that, saying it wasn't responsive to the issues that I've identified. The number two option I would get, I'll come back to. The next bucket is three options under number three, which essentially would say, recognize the comments that were made about staffing shortages and their impact. And the options were, well, one of the problems that Northeast identifies in staffing shortages or management of staffing shortages is that it's, there are workforce problems all over the state in EMS. In fact, all over the country, and they're very right, there are. Everybody's competing with everybody for EMTs and paramedics. So what if we gave Northeast enough money to be competitive with Bangor and Portland to attract those kinds of folks? Another option was, let's just put on another 24/7, 24 hours, 7 day a week truck with a crew. Well, and then the third option was, let's raise their pay and put on a third truck. That cost would be somewhere between three quarters of a million and a million and a half dollars. And quite frankly, we don't trust that if we put on another truck that they could staff it adequately. And we're not sure that helping Northeast to improve the pay of its staff is a function of the towns or the hospital. But regardless, data really don't support either option. Response performance is not, does not indicate a need to spend that kind of money. And generally, when we look at services responding to the number of calls that Northeast responds to in this area, they don't have more resources than Northeast does. So there's got to be a different way of approaching it. So the steering group essentially said, no, we're not going to go that direction. The next bucket, in fact, the next three buckets end up with essentially the same finding, but they're very different types of options. One is a fire-based option that is making one of the fire departments or a combination of fire departments on a regional basis, a sole provider for 911 and interfacility transport. That would be around a one, a little over a million dollar startup, a little over a million dollar annual operating cost. Cost could be less if the operations operated out of Rockland Fire Department with spoke with ambulances located in West Rockport and Camden. And it would be a little bit less because Rockland already has some of those resources and has a leadership structure for fire EMS. In essence, what we said about this, or the steering group said about this, is that, again, the evaluation really doesn't support the need for this kind of expense. It'd be difficult to explain that expense to taxpayers and really justify it from an EMS operations point of view. And trying to do that, start a new service with the timeframe we're dealing with, the next six months, and particularly under COVID environment, which is so uncertain about finances and how health operations are going to go, operations at the hospital are going to go. We just don't know and won't know for months. And it'll be really just changing horses in the middle of a madly running river. The next bucket was a couple of options that said, well, let's, how about starting a service, a fire-based service for 911 in the towns and let Northeast continue to do the interfacility transports from Penn Bay? Cost is a little bit less, a little over half a million to start up, just under a million dollars annual operating cost. But again, the same reason for this, to not be pursued immediately. Evaluation doesn't really support the need for that magnitude of cost right now. And quite frankly, in the amount of time that's available to us, starting up an ambulance service would probably be just irresponsible. And finally, there is a, a number of options that were talked about, and I mentioned some of them already. There might be a mixed private-public cooperative option, having Northeast or another private service work with the fire services like has been done in Brewer, where you actually put a private ambulance into a garage that's operated by the fire department. You have a paramedic from the private service and a driver from the fire department. That is a good possibility. That's essentially what the previous two options we're talking about. And we talked about fire service options. Or doing an ambulance taxation district or doing paramedic response vehicles to get paramedics to, to advanced life support scenes while using more basic personnel and ambulances as a cost-saving scheme. All of those are valid possibilities. But essentially, what we said was, they should be studied further. And that leads me to the option that the steering group actually has focused on. It essentially says, let's continue with Northeast as the primary provider for both 911 response and interfacility transport for the next year. We offer a new contract, and I underscore new contract, to Northeast for one year with a second year option. And we do that because we really believe that most of the issues that have been raised can be addressed through improved contract provisions for accountability, performance measures, supervisory staffing, communications, and a bunch of the other things that I've mentioned, without additional expense. But I also believe that there is a need for a first responder capability in the four towns. And so the steering group recommends, and is making a small investment to start a fire-based first responder capability. The fire chiefs, we've met with those, the steering group has met with the fire chiefs. I've met with the fire chiefs there and separately. And they concur with that kind of approach as a step into EMS for the fire service here with, you know, potentially other things to be developed out of that. It would essentially be, the scheme is that we license by one fire department, one of the four. Perhaps management sharing that remains to be negotiated, but with call pay administered by each town in which the calls occur. Finally, the steering group recommends starting a longer planning initiative to consider regionalization of EMS. Giving fire-based EMS regionalization a real hard look because there are components of that that also go to fire service regionalization that frankly, we were not, we're not in our wheelhouse to evaluate this time around because they involve fire jobs, not just EMS jobs. So some subject matter expertise should be involved in that, either from the locale or from other places that have developed fire EMS services. And also, Thomas and Warren Union and others in the area who might be impacted or take advantage of something like that should be involved into that process. That process should consider all of the three buckets of options I mentioned before that we've sort of tabled. And should, that should become a part of that. Finally, the cost of that would be somewhere in the neighborhood of $400,000. Basic contract continuing Northeast would be, again, be in the $311,000, $315,000, depending on our negotiations with them, which we're working out now. The EMS regionalization planning process with a municipal planning facilitator, we got an estimate of $17,000 to do that, so the usual projection might be 20. Starting a first responder service in the four towns would be a two-part process. Early on, next year, July 1, start to plan that process, get the license from Maniums, get the personnel recruited, trained, get dispatching set up. There's, it's a fairly complicated process to set up a service, even just a first responder service. And then begin operation in January. The cost of that for half a year call pay, that is getting the volunteers to the scene and reimbursing them for going to the scene until the ambulance gets there, would be about $30,000, as would the initial equipment outlay to equip approximately 15 responders and Camden and its fire department, which would be the one, the one department responding in a fire truck. Obviously, the second year, you don't have that equipment expense. You have twice as much call pay, but the budget is basically flat for the second year. And then there's some insurance and other administrative expenses, and the total cost is $403,000. The steering group still has to tackle how that gets divvied up among the four towns. Right now, it's divided up by population base. There may be some other things that we need to look at in the next week or so. We realize that in the next week or so, we need to get these numbers finalized for your budget-making process. And that's it. I'm glad to take any questions you might have.
Thank you. Kevin, that's great, a great summary. Padra, do you want, do you probably make comment on this or would, before I go, rather comments?
I think it would be great to let Farley in as a panelist in case there are any questions he can answer.
He's his panelist. Chief, do you have any comments or anything you want to add at this point?
Kevin, can you take your screen share up just while we do a Q and A?
Sure.
Absolutely. Good point. Thank you. And somewhere in the next, we had Farley, where do you go?
I think I'm here, Bob.
Okay, there you are. You're a little, you're dark like me. Go ahead, Chris.
No, I think that we really appreciate the work that Kevin McGinnis and Tom Judge did to get us to this point. And like, we certainly agree with the, with this agreement.
Great. Thank you, Chris. Are there any other questions for Chris or Tom? Marco?
I actually have one for Kevin. The couple slides, it said, supportive, the last thing would be SME. Use those, those initials. What were those initials for?
Subject matter expert. I'm sorry.
Okay, subject matter expert.
Somebody, somebody who knows fire service a lot better than I do.
Got it. Okay. Second question, you just mentioned that the only fire department that would be doing the regional, or the first responder service was, would be Camden. I thought that's what you said. What about Hope, Lincolnville and, and Rockport?
I just wasn't being clear. I'm sorry. No, they're all, I, my, our expectation is that they would all participate cooperatively, that there would be volunteers from all four towns. All I meant to say was, in the other three towns, people would likely be responding in their own vehicles. In Camden, there would most likely be a response in a Camden fire truck. That remains to be seen, but that's the way they're talking about it.
I was curious about that, that difference.
Yep. Questions, comments? Mr. Ben Z, I'd be surprised if you didn't make a comment.
Of course. First, Kevin, thank you very much for, you and Tom and your colleagues for digging into this for us. It's a process that's been going on for a while and really in earnest for this board for the last, about two years ago. So I think it's very helpful to have a really broad view and look that incorporates a lot of perspectives and figuring out, I think, the primary goal for everybody, which is, how do we provide the best EMS service possible in the community at a, in a financially responsible way? Because at the end of the day, we could spend, you know, as, as much money as we can come up with and have a million ambulances, but that's not necessary. So where do we find that responsible medium that gets the right trained personnel to citizens as quickly as possible and do it in a way that isn't going to break the bank of the municipalities? So I really appreciate the platform you've given us to look at this. The, for me, I, you know, I think that looking at fire-based EMS, which is in your slide early in the presentation, takes up the vast majority of EMS across the state, at least in terms of the number of agencies, is definitely a smart thing for us to look at in the long term. I, I agree that trying to shift, completely shift the way that we respond overnight or in the next six months simply isn't feasible. But a lot of people that pay attention closely to EMS, work in fire and EMS over the last, you know, couple of decades, but certainly over the last few years, a lot of them are noticing the same things and hearing the same things, which is that volunteerism is starting to dwindle. And we need to find ways to get people more interested in either being an on-call volunteer that's paid for the calls or per diem. But the reality is, there was a large two-part series in the Portland Press Herald over the summer that talked about how this is not a national issue, but a statewide issue, that volunteerism and EMS and fire services in Maine are dwindling. And I think the reality is that we've sort of been getting away with having a very low cost for EMS in this community for a long time. In Northeast, when they came in, I think it was a $10,000 contract that ballooned to a $300,000 contract, which on the face of it, seems like such a big increase, but the reality is we're still not paying a lot for EMS, if you consider it, at least in my opinion. I think getting people used to the idea that for us to rely on trained professionals in a service like this to volunteer their hours in this day and age like they used to be able to is probably unrealistic. You know, I think we've talked about this before in some other ways, but you know, in, in your average family setting, both mom and dad work 40-hour jobs or more these days. It's not, it's not the family of 20 or 30 or 40 years ago when they had lots of time when they're going to have to volunteer for things like this. We don't live in an age when the Knox Mill would be able to stop everything and 20 or 30 people would pour out of the Knox Mill of the fire station and go to every call. We just don't live in that world anymore. So I think that looking at how to address this and stay ahead of the ball so we don't find ourselves in the position that a lot of fire departments and EMS services in Maine have found themselves in recently, which is the door is shuttering for one reason or another, and then sort of having to just rely on the next best thing and not be prepared. I don't think anybody wants that, and I think that this is a really proactive way to take a positive step forward that gets more trained personnel to the door. Take a positive step forward that gets more trained personnel to the doorstep of those in need quickly. And helping us prepare for if we do need to make more significant changes to our firing unit system down the road That we're one step closer to being more educated about that and being able to do that in a responsible way. So I was very happy with the responsiveness in your findings and I think the level headedness of the way that the steering group looked at it. Yeah, I think the, the, we have lots of options on the table, but I like the way that you're looking at it. And I don't really have any questions per se. I think you covered a lot, but I just sort of wanted to give my attitude on the direction that you're suggesting that we did.
Thank you very much, Taylor. Any other comments before we move on? Allison, go ahead.
Allison, you have no, we're not hearing you.
About now.
Yeah, I get it now.
Okay. Sorry about that. So this was very helpful to me, especially as a layperson, so to speak. That I've heard lots about this issue over the past few years, but it's For those of us that don't commonly have to call an ambulance or are involved in it all the time. It's just really hard to know what everybody's talking about a lot of the time and what's normal and what's not and what's this level and what's that. And so it was nice to hear, okay, I think I heard correctly that There are some problems with Northeast ambulance and our model, but it's not a catastrophe. It's maybe not even as bad as we thought it was. Of course, everything is a matter of perspective. But I'm wondering if maybe anybody listening is kind of wondering about examples of types of things that Insufficiencies that we might be talking about. Like for me, I realized it was sort of surprising To me a few times being with people that needed to call an ambulance or hearing about, you know, when you call 911, what do you expect to happen? And I think, you know, a lot of the time it's, we're not focused on whether it's the fire department that shows up first or the police department or whatever. But you, you just kind of expect that whoever is showing up is whoever is able to get there first can Do some basic things like CPR or certain levels of medical response. But I don't think most of us really know what those different levels are and what, you know, the average police officer, what can they do? Can they do anything? The average firefighter, what can they do? How, you know, how long is it typical to have to wait? So also, it seems like sometimes When I've been in places where an ambulance has been called, the ambulance will finally come and there'll be some, maybe like a trained paramedic, for example. And they've got all kinds of knowledge, but really the issue is that somebody just needs to be moved into a car. And that paramedic isn't strong enough to do that kind of thing. And it just, it struck me a bunch of times, it's just a massive waste of resources to have, you know, not as much of a pool to draw from. And that if there were more communication, then maybe Oh, it's just this, you know, we send the fire department over there because there's a strong guy that can just help this guy get in the car or Where are we now in terms of, you know, some of the firefighters have been trained or have been taking courses? Like, have we made any progress in the area of A more diverse group of people being able to respond to some of this?
Chris, do you want to answer that question?
I'm not articulating it that well, but.
Well, to, in answer to Allison's question, I think if you remember last budget year, we talked about doing this. And as Kevin said, trying to do it in the era of COVID was extremely difficult for our class. Some people finished, some still are still in process. And in the midst of that, you'll also remember that Steve Wilson left the town's employment and went to Belfast. And so code enforcement from October until two weeks ago, when Rosie Started working shifted to the fire department and that kept us busy for four months and Jeremy's predicting that we're going to continue working with Rosie for at least another six months Till she's fully certified and trained. So that kind of puts a brakes on that. One of the things that we have to decide.
I'm not, I don't, I don't actually know the answer to the question. I'm not making any kind of an allegation about what's happened or not happened. I'm just curious. I have not been following this carefully, so I'm just curious. How many people have completed the course? What's our goal? What does that actually mean?
Just a general statistic, Chris, how many people have been in the process?
I believe 18 started the class and they weren't all from Camden Fire. They're from the area.
Okay.
There have been a handful who have completed the process and several that I can't give you a number off the top of my head.
That's good. That's a good size number. Mark, go ahead.
Two things. Number one, Chris, are any of the people on the trucks able to respond as a EMT now? When you, when you go out to calls? Do you have anybody able to respond as an EMD?
We have somebody licensed, but we're not licensed to provide that service through main EMS.
Okay, so we, that's something we still have to work on. Okay, that's something we can work on. Kevin, second question, I noticed that in, and let me go back to what Taylor said. One, thank you. It's incredibly in-depth report. I appreciate it. And Tom, thanks for your help for all of this. I noticed on the recommendations on the page before, most of the recommendations were Said that we don't recommend in the next six-month period because that's when the contract expires. Were there any changes? Would you recommend any of those if you were looking two years down the line, for instance? Because they all said, they all said, you know, we don't recommend this in the next six-month period.
Right. No, I, I understand. The reason, Mark, that's a hard question is that when you're looking, well, one of the options is a fire-based regionalization option. You're looking at solving two problems with one answer. One is providing adequate EMS and one is providing adequate fire service. And that often is found to be a really good way to go, very economical and very efficient way to go. The problem that we personally had was that we're not fire service experts and that was the whole subject matter expertise. We not only didn't have the time, but we are not able to evaluate how best Chief Farley should use manpower Just on his trucks and schedule that stuff. We just don't do that kind of thing. I've been a firefighter for five, six years in my life, but I can't not, not.
I just wanted to, because it, in some respects, people look at that and go, oh, they didn't recommend that path. But it's only because of the, I want to make clear that it's only because you don't have experience in that area and you were looking at a timeframe.
And it is very importantly, the timeframe. The other piece here that you have is a complication that other communities don't is that your ambulance service also does inter-facility transport with the hospital. They're all your townsfolk that are coming out of the hospital to go to other hospitals. That's just one more complicator. So it just, it bears more study. We might people guiding it.
And I'm sorry, one more question. It occurred that the EMS, the Northeast staffing problem has been alleviated. And, and that we weren't having the problems we were having a couple of years ago. Is that also happened with their, do they have a supervisor on staff now? Where are we now? And have they managed to solve some of their staffing problems in a time when it seems like it would be harder than ever because of COVID?
Right. COVID's been a mixed bag. It's, it's caused ambulance volumes to go down for a period. It's gone, caused jobs for ambulance services to go up, including vaccinating people. So it's really hard to say how that's going to be in the end, what kind of impact on manpower that would have. The manpower problem is not over. It's not over in Maine. It's getting worse in Maine.
Whole country.
Over in the country. It's getting worse in the country.
Right.
And there's a particular reason for it, which I can't go into now. It's too complicated. I would say that, that Northeast right now is doing okay on a manpower basis. I can't promise that for next month or 10 months from now. I would say they do have a supervisor on and have for several months now. And he's been very stable. I've gotten very good reports about his performance. Will he be here a year from now? I don't know. But Northeast has to have in their contract and insurance that will.
Mark, I'm gonna, we were.
Let me just take that question to Chris really quick. Chris, is the supervisor situation improved our communication?
I believe there is a supervisor at the Rockport base. I haven't not met with them. I do, we do get periodic calls. And, and I would just like to follow up, you know, kind of on Taylor's comments as well as, as Kevin's in that Of the larger kind of evaluation of the fires- EMS service in the area Is something that I've kind of talked about for 10 or so years. And, you know, when you first started talking about it, it met with very cold shoulders. And more recently, that desire is growing throughout Knox beyond. So I, I think we're, we're going to have more people that are willing to have that conversation about how we continue to move forward.
Thanks, Chris. And I want to, we have to move on with the rest of our agenda, obviously. And this has been a great presentation, great amount of work. Thank you so much, both you, Tom and Kevin, for all the work you've done. What a great, great expenditure of time for us. Really, it's an eye-opener to me. So thank you, gentlemen. Thank you very much. I'm sure we'll be talking again and good evening. Thank you. With that, I'd like to ask the select board to move to leave the select board meeting convened as wastewater commissioners.
I'll make that motion and.
I'll second that.
Okay, motion made and seconded in discussion. We'll call vote, Taylor.
Hi.
Hi.
Allison.
Hi.
I.
I also thank you. As wastewater commissioners, we have honor to a discussion of the town of Rockport share of the wastewater treatment plant cost And related discussion on the inter-local agreement with Rockport. Would you like to lead?
Yes, and David Bolstrich is here as well.
Allison, would you be so kind?
Oh, we already.
He's here.
I'm playing Dollywood here. Right. Way ahead, Audra.
So as you all know, when we started talking about the wastewater treatment plant upgrade project Going on four years now, it was understood that Rockport would be contributing a share towards the upgrades. That would be equivalent to the capacity they use at the plant or the capacity that it takes to treat Wastewater that comes to Camden's plant from Rockport. And I think, you know, in, in the course of leadership changes in Rockport, both at the administrative level as well as The select board level. The, the way that they would provide that contribution, I think there was some misunderstanding. You know, our, our sort of what we had communicated to them would be they would seek their own financing and it would be a lump sum Payment to Camden that, you know, we sort of calculated into our funding and financing package when we Were working out what that would look like with rural development. And I, I don't think it, you know, at some stage that, that sort of wasn't passed on. And so the understanding in Rockport was that they would sort of reimburse Camden on a yearly basis When they're billed quarterly for their rates. So, and that's, you know, and it's, I can understand how that confusion could happen Because there have been some capital projects in the past where that was the method that was used to seek payment From Rockport for their share of a capital project. However, what, you know, whatever the communication breakdown was, the fact remains, there's about $1.2 million Contribution towards the project that we need to solve for. And that we do have a few different options as to how we could do this. And in the packet, Mike Jenkins from Rural Development, you know, sort of laid out some of those options, but I also have another one for the select board. So just to keep everyone informed, the option that is least preferable is us Sort of changing the scope of the project to remove $1.2 million of work. That would be very difficult for us to do and it would mean that we're sort of deferring Upgrades to pretty essential infrastructure. The pump stations would probably be The infrastructure that would be first on the list to be cut, but you know, I would not recommend doing that. They're definitely at a stage where they, they need some considerable upgrading. We cannot cut the new force main that connects the C Street pump station and the Bayview pump station From the scope of the project because it's one of the drivers of the low interest rate and Sources of grant funding that we're receiving from USDA Rural Development Because of the necessity of replacing that force main. And there certainly aren't $1.2 million worth of work to the plant itself that can be cut out of the scope of the project. And that project has already been bid. So, you know, I really don't think that cutting back on the scope of the project to the tune of 1.2 million is feasible. So another option that Rural Development gave us was to borrow an additional 1.2 million. And the cost of that, we would go kind of the normal or not, or the, you know, the, how we've done it in the past with Rockport Where they'd reimburse us quarterly for that loan. However, I think, you know, that, that would take some time. There would be some approvals that needed to be sought. So, you know, it would just be something that, you know, could potentially put us off schedule On a project where we've already bid it out and received really favorable, you know, turn, really competitive bid price. So I would recommend, and I'm going to share my screen, that a third option we could consider Is an option that Dave Bolstrich, Jody and I have been working on is sort of looking at our wastewater reserves to try and come up with The funds that would be necessary to cover Rockport's share. And if you look at our reserve accounts, those combined come up with About a million dollars and we'd have about close to a quarter of a million that we would need to raise from other sources. I would recommend that since we're, you know, we're at budget time, we could consider You know, some inter-fund borrowing where the wastewater treatment plant would borrow those funds from the unassigned fund balance. And keep in mind, this, this whole 1.2 million would need to be paid back by Rockport over a period of time. And that kind of gets into the second part of this, which is the inter-local agreement. But before we sort of get into the inter-local agreement, does anybody have any questions about The potential of using these reserve funds to cover that 1.2 million?
Yeah, just a general question. The, the four numbers you have here, which are upgrade reserve, 300 and blah, 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 our reserves. Are, then the quarter million, I can see the note here could be, what's your recommendation for the quarter million to be put into the budget for next year?
The general, I'm recommending that that money is borrowed from the general fund.
From the town's general fund and paid back to the town?
Correct.
And then how does, how does Rockport pay? Is that through the inter-local agreement we're going to discuss next?
Yes. So how we've done this in the past, when there's been a capital project that Rockport has been Assessed a share to pay for is that they, on a quarterly basis, you know, we work out what their yearly payment is And we build them for, as part of their rates on a, on a quarterly basis.
Is, is, is it, is the lump sum payment from the town or is it, is it backed into the rates?
It's backed into your rates.
That the Rockport gallonage will be, will be assessed for the percentage they're paying, correct?
Correct.
So I'm sorry, go ahead. Taylor, for some reason you're upside down.
Really?
Oh, he's not, not, not on my screen.
Not on my screen.
Oh.
Bob, is that an option you have for me to turn me upside down if you don't like what I have to say?
You're not upside down on my screen either.
Let's keep going, Audra. Keep going.
So.
Get us back to a full screen, Audra.
Yep, I can, I'll stop.
Yeah.
When, oh, still kind of helpful to see that, those numbers, but the, to be, the amount possibly to be funded by unused Contingencies in the general fund?
No, I think that what Jody meant in that note was. No, I think that what Jody meant in that note was unused contingencies in the project.
Yeah, which I wouldn't. That's why I asked the question.
Okay, I didn't understand.
That's why I asked the question. It sounded like Audrey was saying that quarter million dollars, which I would not like coming from any contingency or construction project is dangerous. I don't want to play the shell game other entities play. That money would be borrowed from the general fund and paid back from wastewater act in a regular basis when it's paid by Rockport to pay back the general fund, the quarter million plus, plus, plus.
Correct. Yes, from the general fund.
Right. And it's not just the quarter million to the general fund that Rockport would be paying back. It's that full 1.2 million that we're contributing to the project on their behalf. Sorry, you got muffled there, Bob.
The, just so we know, the the time period for this payback, the 1.2 million, what's the time periods of determinus with the the loan package for the wastewater treatment plant?
Well, that's, I mean, you do have some flexibility with that. So that's something that you could determine in the terms of the interlocal agreement.
Other questions. Mark, did you hand up?
Yes, have, has, where is Rockport in this arrangement? Which works for us and works for me. Where are they with with working it this way?
Well, they've expressed a lot of reservation about them trying to come up with a lump sum payment to the town of Camden because they would have to raise that through seeking their own financing, which needs voter approval at town meeting, and they're not confident that something like that would be approved. So they were quite apprehensive about that and agreed that if Camden could pay up the upfront, their contribution upfront, and then they reimburse us for it over time, that would be a much easier route.
Okay, so they 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 would be willing to 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 work with us that way?
Well, this, but this is another thing. They have very publicly talked about building their own wastewater treatment plants. So, you know, I I just feel that we, you know, it would be wise for us to try to nail down the terms of how this is going to work in the interlocal agreement.
Yes, Allison.
Oh, I mean, it's very clear to me that the project needs to go forward as planned, no matter what, and that we have to, you know, not, not no matter what, but that it's our responsibility to fund the project as planned and to do that sort of expecting that, expecting nothing from Rockport. I think in the end, we'll end up working something out. But if anybody's been following their situation over there, they're in a bit of a wastewater crisis. People have really high bills for a lot of reasons. But it's not, we can't, we can't sort of plan on anything right now in terms of being like, okay, well, as long as we do this, then we know we're going to get paid back by Rockport, because I think, you know, a good negotiator from Rockport would say, oh, no, we actually have other options and we don't even know if we want to re-sign an interlocal agreement with Camden. So I'm not, I'm not putting words in their mouth, but they they have a lot of sorting things out to do. So I guess my main concern tonight would be just making sure that we have a mechanism that works for funding that. And I'm wondering about the borrowing from the general fund. Is that equivalent to borrowing from the unassigned fund balance?
Yes.
How, what's the threshold for needing to get voter approval for that?
We would need to get voter approval, so it would coincide with the adoption of the FY22 budget.
Oh, we can wait that long?
I believe since we have, you know, a million dollars worth of funding in reserve accounts with the wastewater within the wastewater budget, that they would be Rural Development would would feel that we've sufficiently covered off on the risk of having all, you know, the majority of the funding secured for the project.
Now, wasn't, wasn't a major portion of this, the need to have our, the entire project, the entire, everything, the user rate funded rather than taxpayer funded? And how does that?
Yes, and I guess we're really just, the wastewater treatment plan is just borrowing money from the town. You know, like, it's it's really, I mean, just to put it very simply, the wastewater treatment plan is sort of treating the town of Camden like a bank. So that money will be paid back by by users.
And as wastewater commissioners, we have the authority to commit future wastewater customers to debt.
Yeah, yes, you do.
The, the only, the quarter million is, that's just to be clear, the quarter million dollars is the only piece that would go to voters in June. Is that correct?
That's correct, because as wastewater commissioners, you have the authority to spend reserve funds.
Yeah. Yeah, Allison, any more questions?
So we're basically going to be asking tax residents in June to.
Lend a quarter million dollars to the wastewater.
Hopefully lending it to Rockport, but possibly just lending it to.
Quarter million dollars from the general fund, yes.
Just a quarter million.
Well, it's 237, I rounded it off.
Yeah.
Because we, as wastewater commissioners, can approve the utilization of the reserve funds without going to voters.
Yeah, and we can structure it so that the town, the town's general fund gets paid back first.
Right, makes sense.
Yeah.
Mark, Taylor, Jenna?
I think, I think it's a good plan, and I think it's the best solution of of the options. You know, we need to, we need to do the work on the wastewater plant. Bottom line, that has to get done. I think this is the best solution we can do and give, also give Rockport the ability to pay what they owe us, because otherwise we could be in a you know, they might not be able to.
Audrey, in a sense, if the, if the monies were spent from the reserve or even loan from the general fund of Camden, the the users, including Rockport users, are going to be charged for that. Correct?
There, well, when they, when they pay it back, yes.
When do we anticipate, so the the terms that we'll have with Rockport, obviously, for how they would hopefully reimburse us for whatever the appropriate portion is for them, when do we anticipate that being finalized in interlocal agreement?
Well, we started discussions with them about renewing the interlocal agreement in February of 2020. And then everybody knows what happened in March of 2020. So this is not, it's not new to them. We just discussed it with them about a month ago, and there were some things that they wanted to look at a little bit more in terms of, they wanted to really sort of scrutinize Camden's wastewater budget to see if there were any expenses that they could point to that were not related to Rockport in any way. So I think Dave Bolstrich has been working with Woodard and Curran, who's, who manages their collection system or their whole wastewater system on that. But anyway, they they do know, they're they're aware of the need to upgrade that or to renew the interlocal agreement. I spoke with Bill Post this morning about a desire to integrate their repayment to Camden for their share of the plant upgrades in the interlocal agreement. So they're aware of it. I mean, I beyond saying they're aware of it, I I can't say exactly what they're going to agree to.
Okay, I guess, go ahead, Allison.
And it's been, just to say that we started talking about it a month or so ago, that's that might have been the most recent round, but, you know, years ago, we met with the whole Rockport Select Board and it was almost an entirely different group. But we, you know, we went over the treatment plan. We talked, this was before it was even passed by voters. There have been multiple rounds of this. Talked about the need to redo the interlocal agreement. From Camden's perspective, there's no real need to redo it because it kind of works fine for us right now, and they don't have actually another option. So there hasn't been a huge urgency for Camden to be the main driver in sort of renegotiating that, but it would definitely, it would probably make sense for us to try to schedule a joint workshop at some point with them.
Audrey, where is the why can't this, this idea of the reserves and the quarter million that we would go to voters for, why can't that be develop a near, a quick agreement with Rockport irrespective of finishing the interlocal agreement?
We could, that's an option as well. That's something that I talked about with Mike Jenkins from Rural Development. He's getting back to me with examples of, well, in in the, you know, in the cases that he had, it was when water sewer districts borrowed funds from individual towns. There are like templates for agreements like that out there, and Mike's going to get something back to me. So that's certainly an option if we aren't able to kind of come to terms on a broader interlocal agreement, we could certainly focus specifically on the.
Well, unless you tell me, as I looked at it, in the local agreement, there's lots of red and black and and we're not, that's not going to be resolved tonight, certainly not resolved with Rockport. That's going to take some time, especially because they're, yet they are contemplating or studying their own wastewater kind of facility. But it seems more expedient thing would be to approach them with, okay, this is what we're going to do. This is what it's, how it's going to be paid by you, and let's have an agreement on that. And get that part behind us ASAP before we have to make a final decision here because obviously the time period is short. We need to get some ready for warrant for for June, and we have a little bit of time to do it, but not much. In your opinion, could we do that? I'm recommending in a matter of a couple of weeks.
Yeah, I mean, I think we could certainly, I I will reach back out to Rockport and ask them which route would be the most expedient.
I I think that's the way to go, in my opinion, the board. I just think, I look at that interlocal agreement, I see months of negotiation going on there in that package, but this is a a near term thing. We're going to be, I'm not exactly sure when the construction starts, but it can't be that far away. We have, you're right, reducing the scope is, is kind of, kind of late for that kind of thing. And this idea of using the reserves and and the borrowing from the general fund seems like the most straightforward. Now, to that end, if you do negotiate that, back to my question about duration of this payback, we have a 30-year USDA loan, is that correct?
Well, it's, you know, when the project's all said and done, it'll be more like a 27, 28.
Okay. I would think that we would, we would want a shorter term to, for this payback on this whatever you want to call it, Rockport-Camden arrangement. I don't know exactly what that should be, but it may be a function of your discussions with the gentleman you mentioned at USDA. They they may, they may have some input in that.
Yeah, and I just want to ask Dave Bolstrich, is there, because, you know, Jody put these numbers together and I I asked Dave about his level of comfort with drawing down on these reserve funds and you know, I just, I want to give him the opportunity to kind of express any, if he has any reservations or anything else that I haven't communicated or considered to speak to all of you about it.
David?
Yes. I was thinking that we probably want to hang on to about 40,000 of that if we can. Couple of lines there, just in case that we have any unanticipated breakdowns of equipment. Then we would have that money to, to purchase a pump or a motor or whatever we need, a VF drive, something like that, so.
The 175,000, Dave?
Pardon me?
Which, how much, how much?
Uh, let's see, it was, I wanted to keep 15,000 for the treatment plant reserve. And then 25,000 for the pump station reserve.
Oh, so total, sharing 50,000 or 40,000?
Uh, that would be 40,000.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead. Okay. So that would bring the general fund up to about, about two, about 280. Allison, go ahead.
I, since this part wasn't in our packet, and so I haven't had a chance to go through and look at all the different reserve funds that we have and understand what might, may or may not be left, can, is, is this not touching anything like reserves for the collection system or INI reserves or anything like that, or? Is there some?
Those two, those two reserve funds are, aren't being touched. Yeah, we'll, we'll still have that for, you know, working on INI issues in in town, so. Yeah, those aren't being touched.
And to Allison's point, yeah, I'm sorry, Mark, go ahead.
I just have a question for Dave, and this is just, what would it take? And what, I don't know, I can't ask you, what do you think the percentages are, but what would it take for Rockport to build their own wastewater plant?
Yeah, I mean, you're, you're 20 million dollars.
That's a, that's a huge topic. It depends what they build.
Okay, I just wanted to.
They had a whole thing about it. You can watch them on their.
They did. It's, it's not small, but.
I wanted to put that out there in our thing, so.
It seems to me we wouldn't be able to get to a decision by the board, in my opinion. We, we need to, this is a, this is a great new concept that just came up. That's why, not to Allison's point, not to packet. It seems to me we have to do a strong litmus test with Rockport for seriousness about going in this direction ASAP.
Well, I I would, I would say that that would be ideal. We are not operating under ideal circumstances, given the letter that we received from Rural Development, where they're saying we need you to stop your project because we need you to secure the funding first. While I absolutely agree that we need to work on that agreement with Rockport, it would be very helpful if not tonight, but in the the near future, you could sort of agree or approve this conceptually as reserve funds to.
I get that, but I'm only saying is, you know, between now and the the next meeting, we we should have some feedback from Rockport of whether we're considering a payback of this, this chunk of money or not, or.
I guess my point being, Bob, I would really appreciate some sort of approval as soon as possible, because even if they say no, we're not going to pay that money back. I mean, like I said, are we going to scale our project down? We still need to find a way to fund that.
Allison.
Yeah, I, that was my point from the beginning, that I, I think it's, it's, of course, we need to try to work with Rockport, but tonight, I think we need to operate under the assumption that we're preparing to do it without Rockport. I don't see that it's all that likely that they're going to just say, oh, yeah, sure, we're fine with committing to repaying that. If anybody's been following this carefully, they have a lot of evaluating to do. So the best thing for us to do is to imagine that it's just Camden, because we've all agreed that there's nothing we can cut out of the project. And then if we can work things out with Rockport, we can, but I just don't see what's going to be different after we've talked to Rockport.
I agree, and I think, you know, as we go through the process of sort of laying, you know, I, like Allison was saying, they've got a lot of evaluation to do. And I think as they go through the process of evaluating the service that we provide to them, they're going to find that they don't have a lower cost alternative than what we are providing.
Exactly.
1.2 million dollar share. So I'm, I, you know, I'm happy for them to do their due diligence and go through the process, but you know, I really am very confident that when that's all said and done, they're going to find this is the best way forward.
That's fine. I get that, and I don't have any problem with what Allison just said. It's just to be clear to the rate users in Camden, if Rockport does not participate, do their rates go up higher?
Well, I would say, you know, this money that's in reserve, their rates have already paid for it. And that's a million dollars.
The only piece they'd be exposed to is 280,000 dollars.
Correct.
That's the one I want to make clear.
We, we charge Rockport a percentage of the cost to operate our facility, and that's just
12%.
way it goes. It's not a fixed rate that they get. It's a fixed percentage. So unless they, the only way for them to escape it is to have another more attractive option, which simply doesn't exist.
Well, Audrey, do you want, do you want us to do a motion to approve the concept?
That would be much appreciated.
Okay, I'll.
I have a question, Bob.
Oh, sure, go ahead, Charlie.
Yeah, on the um, the twelve, I think it's twelve point four percent, right, that, that Rockport pays um, of the operating costs? Um, would that, so down the road in the future, if that stays the same, the, is it assumed that the um, capital costs are included in the operational costs of that twelve percent regardless?
Correct, their, their share of the, you know, whatever we break the financing for them to pay off that one point two million would be in that, we bill them quarterly.
Okay, so there's not really a question mark about whether or not that gets paid back, but more so how and when?
Yes, yeah. And this was, and I, you know, and if you, by, from speaking with, and you, you can read the, the letter in the packet where the finance director in Rockport was saying, well, you know, this is, this is how we were expecting to do it, that we would be, you know, it would be integrated in our quarterly billing.
Okay, all right, yeah, that's what I thought. I just wanted to make sure that was super clear. Thank you.
Yeah, good question. Mark, are you gonna make a motion?
I was gonna make a motion that we approve the plan um, that Audra has presented uh, using the, the reserve funds to pay for the quantity that we need, minus the, what is it, fifteen thousand dollars that Dave needs?
No, it's forty thousand.
Forty thousand dollars that Dave needs.
Oh, and uh, just as a correction, Jody corrected my number. Um, so it would be three hundred, roughly three hundred and twenty five thousand um, from the town's unassigned fund balance.
Is the three twenty five included with forty that Dave wanted also?
Yes, I believe so.
Okay.
Yeah, that's after that forty is taken out, that's right.
Yes, yeah.
Okay, so, 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 so moved.
Second.
Second, Jenna, discussion. Roll call, Taylor.
Hi.
Allison.
Hi.
Jenna.
Hi.
Hello, Mark, did I recall you?
Hi, sorry.
Five zero, thanks. Okay, onward and upward. Um, I presume, uh, Audra, just to the interlocal agreement, you're gonna keep us surprised is how that uh, negotiation goes along with Rockport, because it looks like it's gonna be a, a little bit of time on that. And with that, I'd like the motion to select board to uh, leave the wastewater commissioners and convene as select board.
So moved. Second.
Motion and second, uh, discussion, roll call, Taylor.
Hi.
Jenna.
Hi.
Allison.
Hi.
Mark.
Hi.
Bob. Five zero, thank you. As select board, we have a few action items, first of which is the approval by the select board of a, of the draft um, pedestrian safety resolution in our packet. Comments?
All right, hold on.
Before we move forward, I think there's a few people that Allison's trying to let in.
Oh.
Yeah.
Now, there's, there is.
Yep, just give me a second here.
I'm sorry. No, there's Davey.
By the way, there was a question on the chat um, from someone asking uh, someone asking on YouTube, uh, Janice forwarded it.
Yeah, then she said she put the.
Yeah, she did. We took care of, I think Allison took care of it, I think.
Um, and then this is where we might also wanna remind people that there will be an opportunity for
Yeah.
public comments um, after, maybe after somebody gives an introduction. But we will, we will look for people that are raising their hand and bring you in when.
Yes, um, with that, um, I think the, the resolution is in the packet. There are comments by the board on the packet, on the packet resolution.
Would you like me to sort of give a explanation of why?
Yeah, please, go ahead. Give us the overview of the wastewater treatment, no, I'm sorry, of the resolution, please.
Absolutely. So um, as all of you know, Camden was asked by MDOT to participate in the Heads Up program. We were one of twenty five communities across Maine that was identified as um, a community where there's um, a relatively high level of conflict between pedestrians and motorists. And the Heads Up program has um, I'd say kind of a three-pronged approach. Um, so focusing on, you know, infrastructure that makes uh, the environment unsafe for pedestrians, uh, identifying motorist behavior that causes pedestrian, pedestrian safety issues and also identifying pedestrian behaviors um, that put them at risk. So after participating in the program, you know, uh, we had a great response from the community, a lot of wonderful suggestions. Um, very thrilled by some of the um, you know, champions of pedestrian safety who've been at it for many, many years in town, such as the Pathways Committee, as well as um, some of the uh, champions that we have in town, um, who have probably been talking about this for a very long time, but um, you know, have become really active recently. Um, like the middle school principal, Jamie Stone. So that's been wonderful to have, you know, that level of um, you know, engagement and interest in uh, pedestrian safety. And it's been, you know, really helpful for us in being able to um, move forward some initiatives that we've known for years are really important. Um, but for, you know, multiple reasons, it's been difficult to address them. So, you know, we've been fortunate to have um, you know, a, a lot of community support as well as MDOT support. If, if anybody has looked at their current work plan, they've identified about um, seventy five thousand dollars worth of um, pedestrian safety, infrastructure improvements um, and uh, the funding to go along with that. So that's, you know, really positive partnership from MDOT in addressing some of these issues. Um, however, when, when you sort of get down to um, you know, the, the detailed work on sort of a crosswalk by crosswalk, sidewalk by sidewalk basis of trying to solve the issues that are causing, you know, the biggest uh, safety challenges for uh, pedestrians in our community, we're kind of finding, you know, there are these, they seem like small details and sometimes it seems like a small thing to um, kind of negotiate around or give a little bit on. But when, when you look at, you know, some of the compromises that are, that are asked to be made, such as, oh, well, you know, around this crosswalk, maybe don't get rid of two parking spaces, just get rid of one. Um, or maybe in this location, leave those hedges there and don't trim them back or only trim them back a little bit. You know, these sort of micro negotiations and decisions, all in all, when taken together, they don't lead to sort of optimal safety condit- conditions for pedestrians. And we're really never able to solve the crux of the problem. And we found this with some very simple things that we've tried to do where, and, and I don't think that anybody was intentionally trying to um, you know, sort of put pedestrian safety down on the list of priorities, but um, you know, kind of think about, they, they've thought about other things of, you know, maybe a bit before pedestrian safety, like parking optimization or um, you know, private investment in uh, amenities or landscaping that is actually in the public right of way or um, concern about the aesthetics of signs and signalization in certain areas of town. So, you know, I, I really think that, you know, over the years, some of these compromises have been made at the sake of having a um, pedestrian infrastructure that prioritizes the safety of pedestrians first and things like parking and hedges and landscaping and um, you know, how ugly we might think signs are first. So really, that, that kind of brought me to the point where I thought it would be best if we're truly saying that pedestrian safety is something that we value and think is important to the town of Camden. Um, I would like the select board to adopt a resolution stating that. And that would be very helpful for myself and staff members like Dave St. Laurent when we're working on these projects to be able to say to, you know, community members that this is the priority, this is the thing that we're going to look at first. And it's going to be the most important consideration when we're upgrading our infrastructure.
Thank you. Uh, 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 any, any input from other staff? Dave, Randy, do you have any input? Um, before I jump over to the board comments about this resolution?
I support it. I think we should be removing any obstacles that uh, prevent us from getting, you know, safer uh, crosswalks and, and things like that. So we got the support of the police department on this.
Thank you, Randy. Dave, any comments?
Um, just, there's already rules in place that um, allow these things to happen and it's really just more um, um, being unified in the message that this is important to the town and um, what's more important than providing a safe route to school for children? I mean, that's kind of a, a no-brainer, I think.
Well, as we get into question, thanks, Dave. And as we get into question, I gotta say it's been drafted really well. Uh, we all put it together, but it's been drafted really well. Mark, you had your hand up?
Yes, um, I'd like to support this uh, very strongly. We just spent a lot of time talking about EMS about, and what that's about is how important people's lives are. And this is about life safety. And after having a son just go the four, the four years of the middle school and talking to Jamie Stone, the principal there, you know, for years about the problem she's had for her students, and she's gone out there and done traffic control on Mechanic Street. Um, it's just, it's important. If we ever lost a student in the middle school or anywhere else or anyone because we didn't do the proper job, it would be heartbreaking. It's the most important thing.
Thanks, Mark.
Mr. Ben Z.
Um, I agree full-heartedly. Um, definitely support um, the idea of this and hope that it kind of paves the way for us continuing to encourage people to um, you know, walk into the village just your can, walk from some of these um, streets and areas of town that are, that are close to the downtown area, but not necessarily super accessible because the sidewalk may be deteriorating or there isn't a sidewalk yet. Um, places like John Street and portions of Route One that I know have been talked about and there are plans in the works in various phases. Um, but I think it's a no-brainer to um, you know, encourage ourselves and, and future leaders to um, continue to support pedestrian safety.
Thank you, Taylor. Um, Allison, do you have your hand half up?
I mean, I guess I, I, for me, I would rather see what any members of the public have to say first and then um, it might be that I don't need to repeat what's already been said.
Then see anybody's hand up.
I see at least Jamie Stone's hand was definitely up and I know that Gretchen Hune wants to speak too, so here I will bring in Jamie if that's okay.
Of course.
With you. And I'll maybe, I guess Gretchen's hand too, so I'll go ahead and bring.
That's fine.
Also.
And um, there is Ms. Gretchen. I think. And if you could unmute yourself, please, and state your name and residency, please.
Hi, everyone. I'm Jamie Stone, uh, London resident, a parent of two uh, girls in the school system, one a seventh grader, one a junior in high school, and I'm the principal at the middle school. Um, thanks so much for putting forth this resolution. I think it's a fantastic show of support. Um, for something I know I've been a little bit of a, a harping presence for, for some time. Um, as Mark knows, I am known to jump out in front of a car driving too fast down Nolton Street if need be with uh, Maggie, our custodian. So this is a really important topic to me. I love the fact that we built a school in downtown Camden. It's so great. I'm a Maine girl, so having an in-town school is not the norm for all the villages around the state. So I'm really proud of the fact that we kept ours in town and that we have a school. If we hadn't, we would have been out in Rockport probably and not had our own school. So um, I think it's awesome that we're back off the street and we're not right on the edge anymore and that's provided so much additional safety. So that's been a great step for us. And um, Dave and Randy have been phenomenal, Randy over the years and Dave with helping get our sidewalks cleared in time for school and our kids are walking and biking more than ever. Because of COVID, we have an enormous number of bikers. We put our two bike racks out the first day of school and had to drag the third one out. That really didn't fit in the design space for all the bicycles um, that showed up. So it was a great uh, challenge to have that happen, but also a, a reality of wow, everyone's really biking and walking now. Isn't this awesome? So we know that outdoors is the safest place to be during COVID, but we also really encourage that throughout the school year. We hold a couple bike and walk events every year where we encourage every single student in our school to bike or walk to school. So we park buses and um, drop off students at the tannery lot who walk. And we have kids biking a few miles away, sometimes on really busy routes to come to school. And they're crossing and coming from all over the place, including pretty far out into Rockport. I have three sixth grade girls who've made it their um, annual goal to bike to school every single day this year. They have not missed a day, even on our snowy days. And it's exciting to think that we could create more space to make sure they're arriving safely. They do cross Route One and um, I don't know if everyone's seen the emails that I've sent that I've mainly sent to Randy and Audra and Allison and Dave. Um, but just a few key points from that, and then I'll stop talking are that we have had kind of near-hit experiences several times with students. Um, sometimes ourselves as drivers coming into work, or sometimes when we are running bike and walk to school events. The um, crosswalk over by the Free Street, Elm Street, over by the Montessori School, I have almost been struck by a car standing on the side as people turning left onto Free Street are zooming around the right-hand side, not noticing me with a yellow blaze vest and a stop sign in the middle of the road. Um, crossing students and sometimes right there also crossing coastal opportunity um, people and um, you know, people with developmental disabilities deserve the same right of access as our children do and, and safe passage. And that's a heavily walked um, space for them every single morning. And then obviously the crosswalk, that's another major issue where we did have a child struck this year was at the bottom of uh, Nolton Street where it crosses to Mechanic. And I really appreciate, um, Randy, thanks for putting those cones out with the signs to close those couple spaces in the short term. It was really startling to see just how frustrated drivers are to have to stop and wonder why. I'm waiting for a child to come out from behind a truck. And I know this is an unusual year. Kids are traveling to school at different times. So we kind of think of school as a seven thirty in the morning adventure. And this year it's more like a nine fifteen. So it doesn't always make sense for people who are driving now to see kids on the road at different times. And um, I love middle schoolers. They're my people. They're my favorite group of kids to work with. Um, we can help instruct them and teach them and we do a great job. And Gretchen does a lot with bike and walk to safety and we do a lot of education. But the middle school mind is built to be distracted really easily. And the minute you put more than one person beside another middle schooler, the world disappears and they're the only thing that matters or the center of the universe. And so distractions are really easy to walk into a road or be paying attention to a phone. Um, and so we'll, we'll, we'll work really hard in the education piece, but we would love the continued collaboration just to make a clear, visible path for our students. So if they make the mistake to step out into traffic or if they're just really small, we have some unbelievably small fifth graders especially, that they can be visible to the drivers that are coming. Um, lots of our students, as the weather gets warmer, walk into town and spend a lot of time in town and crossing over Elm and going into the park and over by the library. And I know sometimes that overwhelms the downtown area, but they can walk in groups up to twenty to twenty-five people. And there's always those last two kids that bolt across the street at the last minute. So we'll do our part to try to encourage um, families and our educational piece and just um, really appreciate the support and, and initiative of this resolution. My hope is that when it comes to the time when an angry homeowner wants to argue about a tree, you can remember the moment that I told you that a child was struck in that crosswalk um, area. And um, I don't want someone to lose their life before we really make a commitment to it, to make change. And I know I've offered to take black paint and paint over parking spaces, whatever you guys need from us. We are happy to do a service project with students doing some work. Um, but I just hope that the, the property, the, you know, the worries about things like business um, access and property ownership don't really interfere with safety. Um, people over things is something that I think we pride ourselves on in the state of Maine and I hope that continues for.
Very much, Jamie. Thanks for your comments and good luck in your difficult job these days.
Thank you.
Um, and we had Gretchen uh, next. Um, did you wanna make a comment, Gretchen, and state your name?
I do. Hi, I guess I'm Gretchen Kuhn. I'm a resident of Camden. I also um, work at the middle school right uh, down the hallway from Jamie Stone. And it's been my pleasure to partner with um, the Bicycle, Bicycle Coalition of Maine and to participate in the DOE workshops and um, be part of the work that the town has put into trying to bring a focus on pedestrian safety, especially. Um, I think Jamie just spoke a lot about um, Um, I think Jamie just spoke a lot about, um, kids that are biking to school. Of course, this is about pedestrian safety as well. And I would say that, um, I think there's a, a clear distinction between those two modes of travel that also, um, you know, needs careful scrutiny as we go forward, um, with this resolution. I think the resolution is fantastic. I really am grateful that the town has, um, put a lot of effort into it. And, um, I look forward to more work, um, with you and with my students.
Thank you, Gretchen. Good to see you. Take care.
Oh, and I have to say I have two middle school kids too.
Okay, good. Thank you.
And they.
Um, next would be Sally. As, um, you're asked, um, you used, um, but when she goes, she just, she moved around.
Right here. I'm here. I, um, I just want to.
Sally, would you state your name and where you're, where you're from?
Oh, excuse me. Sure. Um, Sally, Sally Smith. I'm from Camden. I live near the middle school, right down the street. I have a middle schooler who walks there and two other children, um, in the school system. And I just want to show support for the resolution. I want to thank you all for making this a priority. Hopefully everything goes through and, um, just want to echo and support Jamie and Gretchen for the work they're doing right at the middle school to keep the kids safe. But this would certainly go a long way. Um, and I can't believe how perfectly Jamie described a middle schooler because as much as you tell them, look both ways, stop, you know, the speed of the car is coming down the road. It's just, it's, it's scary. So we appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you very much, ladies. I will bring it back to, uh, select board for discussion and action. Mark?
Um, I think Allison has a comment, but I was just gonna go right ahead with the, with the motion to approve that pedestrian safety resolution.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Uh, was that a go-ahead to me or to Mark?
What the heck? I don't care. Go ahead.
Sorry, I just didn't hear.
I did. I mumbled.
Okay, so, um, yeah, I just wanted to say that we did, um, also discuss this a little bit with the pathways committee. And Gretchen makes a good point that there, you know, there is a distinction between bicyclist safety and pedestrian safety and the behaviors and infrastructure changes associated with each of those things. Um, and that was definitely considered during the resolution. Um, Camden was identified as a place where there are a high number of pedestrian hits and all of those forums, uh, with DOT were specifically focused on, um, you know, this pedestrian issue. But that doesn't mean, um, that we're not considering bicyclists. In many cases, things that help pedestrians also help bicyclists. And there's kind of like this fine line with, um, especially with the middle school and younger age group where a lot of the time they're getting off their bikes in order to be able to cross a crosswalk or sort of going back and forth between pedestrian and bicyclist behaviors. But, um, another big part of our discussions have, has been this methodology of complete streets and trying to shift, um, the philosophy for the use of our roads to accommodate all users. Um, and not just, um, the motorist kind. So that's definitely, um, in the works also. And, um, I just want to say thank you to, um, especially like people like you, Jamie, who I know have been sort of like the, sometimes the, you know, the lady yelling in the winder probably felt like that. And I think we've all felt like that on certain issues. And, um, this is one of those things where it's like everybody actually agrees. Whenever I talk to people, they all agree, oh, this is a problem and we need to do something. And it's been, I think, a little bit bewildering to some of us to try to identify where the obstacles, um, have been. And a lot of the time it's, you know, different people in town, government have tried really hard at one point or another and encountered some kind of an obstacle, like maybe a, a really angry resident that was just, you know, they didn't feel the strength to, to fight against them or they oftentimes felt like, oh, I tried this a while ago and I couldn't get support. And so they kind of quit. And then other people come along and they're trying and it's like, but if you don't sort of sync up and say, hold on, of, you know, everybody that's in a decision-making capacity right now, what do we think? And do we all agree? Um, you know, we do that. We don't, we don't move forward. So I also think everybody should recognize we're probably going to get some really angry residents because there are a few, like these two specific crosswalks, for example, the Mechanic Street one. It's, it's going to mean eliminating some parking spots. It already has. That's going to be upsetting. There are some hedges around town that are in the right-of-way. This is going to be upsetting. Some of it might not look as good. Um, so we just need to be prepared for that. Um, and, you know, make sure we're a supportive voice for town staff and not, um, you know, a, a whining voice trying to ask for compromises. So I'm excited that we're finally doing this.
Marco.
Um, like I said, I just want to, I, I'm ready to move ahead with the resolution.
Make a motion, Mark.
I'm, uh, make a motion that we approve the pedestrian safety resolution.
Second.
Second agenda, discussion. I'm hearing any roll call vote, Taylor?
Aye.
Allison?
Aye.
Yeah.
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
Um, aye, thank you. Five-zero motion carries. Thank you, ladies. Good evening and onward and upward for the rest of us. Take care. Um, uh, next item is the, uh, well, discussion of adding some, um, budget committee members for this forthcoming FY22 budget review. Uh, we already discussed last time that we only have, was it fourteen? I think you said, Audra.
Yes. I think we've had another three drop off.
So what's the number now?
Eleven, I believe.
Eleven, for which the quorum would probably be seven, right?
No, the quorum is still.
I totally disagree with that, but, um.
All right. So let's discuss if we have any nominees for, uh, increasing our roll call for the budget committee.
You know what we should have done, which we just had three Camden residents here. What, um, I'll be honest, I've asked a few people and haven't heard back. I don't want, um, I do not have nominees tonight, but I do, I'm hoping that we will not sort of make this the deadline that, because theoretically we could still.
Let's, let me ask this way. I agree with you, Allison, because I.
I'm in the same boat. Yeah.
Two people and I got one that said, uh, definite maybe. Um, and.
Love those.
And one person that said, um, well, we only, only maybe could do it for one year, but I'm thinking to be, you know, whatever, but I agree with you. But let me ask this question. If we have eleven, what, as a minimum, what number do we feel comfortable with?
Fifteen.
We, if we have eleven, so we need, the problem is with this whole thing, that's the quorum. So if they, if anybody doesn't show up.
Is dead.
Then they can't vote. So that's, we, I mean, we know enough to know that that's not gonna work.
It seems to me we're looking for a minimum, what we're throwing out a number of eighteen or, or, you know, some number as a minimum of that. I mean, I'm not trying, it doesn't have to be that, but if it's less than that, we're gonna have, you know, people don't show up for some of these meetings because of schedules in, in March. And we've had as many as five and six that haven't shown up for a specific budget committee on a Thursday night. Um, um, so it seems to me to have the quorum of eleven, you want a little cushion of fifty percent minimum?
Yeah, I mean, I think.
Want at least six more.
Okay.
We need twenty-one, actually. That's the, that's the number that our charter says. And so, and we can do that. Um, one thing I haven't been able to find, is there an actual law somewhere that says they have to be eighteen or over? Could we have a few, would this be a nice opportunity to see if we grab a few students?
I would suspect, I would suspect there has to be a voter.
Yeah, I would too.
I, I think we, we owe it to the town to make sure the people who are working on the budget that the taxpayers are paying, our voters and taxpayers in Camden.
I mean, uh, that residents, I would make them residents. I don't think we owe it to the town to make sure that we exclude anybody under the age of eighteen from the budget committee, but, um, it's not.
I love the idea. I'm not crazy about someone under the eighteen being elected to the budget committee.
They're not elected. They're just appointed. But, I mean, they could just talk. Really, it's not, it's just.
Why don't, let's take, what, what do you recommend for an action that we, um, uh, to top of the list of, of recommendations of people that have nodded their head this way? Yes, uh, by next select board meeting or what's, what's the best approach?
It has to be the next select. I mean, that's, we just have to try harder over the next two weeks.
Okay, um, why don't we, um, why don't we do that? Why don't we submit names to Audra between now and the twenty-third? It's the twenty-third is next select board meeting, I believe. So we can have a recommended list for approval by the board on the twenty-third. Is that fair?
That sounds fair.
Okay. Assume that we can tell people that, um, they'll be able to attend all of these meetings from the comfort of their own home via Zoom, right?
Yeah.
Sell them on the idea.
That's a huge selling point.
It is, especially this year. Well, okay, we'll do that. So for the moment, we will table this item, uh, until the twenty-third for, for the exact approval of actual names. Fair? Um, next agenda item is the, uh, approval of our fee or annual approval of fee, which we currently have in our packet. One, two, three, four, I believe, uh, directors, individual directors that have submitted packages. And I would suggest we take one of them at a time. Um, and with that director, bring in that director for that discussion. And if that's okay with the board, the first one we bring in, but Allison, go ahead.
I mean, I, I found it frustrating that in many cases, there was no comparison between the current, what the current fees are and what the proposed fees are. So when I'm looking at this, it, it just said proposed twenty-twenty-one. And I, I, I can't tell where there's a difference and where there's not. So it may, I, I feel like I haven't been able to do the review as well as I, I should. I know I should have probably said something about this earlier, but also I think this, the Parks and Rec fees didn't end up in the packet until.
Very late.
Yeah, I, I don't feel very well-prepared to.
The, the, I believe there are a couple that did do that. Actually, I think, I think, I believe the Parks and Rec put in three percent where they suggested a three percent increase. And I, and, and I'm not, I believe the harbor committee, sorry, the harbor rates, which I believe are the shortest fuse we have because those bills go out on March first. Is that correct? No, they do in March, aren't they? Audra, aren't they due in March, the, the harbor fees for?
For like the, um, finger float, inner harbor float more.
They do like March fifteenth. And I believe, and correct me if I'm wrong, I read the harbor fees as being no change.
Correct.
The only change was the pump-out fee.
Right.
Okay.
The only change was there. So.
Or anything that's in, they all.
I interpreted too, I think that the pump-out fee was the only change.
Yeah, and, and I, so is, let, let us at least try to get this harbor fees thing in because we tabled this once before, uh, because we weren't ready and I'd agreed. But I think we should, uh,
Okay.
Is, is Steve Pixley available?
I'm just looking.
No.
Yeah, I don't believe he.
I don't think so. But, uh, Audra, am I correct in, in, are we all correct in that the only fee change was the one that Taylor mentioned, which was the pump-out fee?
Yeah. Yeah.
Like I said, this one's got a short fuse, so I think we shouldn't be, unless it's something dramatic, we shouldn't be, uh, delaying a decision on that one.
Okay, so the issue that I.
Go ahead.
Have with, um, this one, and I don't think there is a short fuse on bills going out, would be the dinghy dock. Because there had been discussion about trying to, um, break up those fees a little bit more. At this point, you pay the same fee if you have a kayak as compared to a, you know, a relatively medium-sized Boston Whaler. Um, you know, some of the boats are much bigger and much more impactful and they're, there's the same fee for each. And there had been discussion on, I think it was the harbor committee also, um, about this. So it's, it's getting, the dinghy dock is getting so full. Sometimes it's really hard to find a place. And it's frustrating that, um, different users have a, a much different level of impact and are paying the same level. Um, is there any way that we could?
Yes.
Pull that out?
Well, I think, absolutely. I was gonna say, Allison, you're, I think you're referring to the one category called dinghy phase, correct?
Yes.
I think there's absolutely no reason why we couldn't approve, uh, if we agree, approve the rates as proposed with the exception of the dinghy fees, which we'll address at a later date.
That would make me very happy.
I'm good with that. Okay, we got a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion to approve the rates as, uh, as provided with the exception of the dingy rates, which we will approve at a later date. Um, uh, do I have any discussion? Not hearing any roll call vote, Mark?
Aye.
Uh, Taylor?
Aye.
Jenna?
Aye.
Allison?
Aye.
Bob, I also. Thank you very much. Um, now looking at, um,
Co.
I was looking next at the, um, well, let's see, do we, we do have a package in here, uh, for Parks and Rec, which is the Snowball Price List. Um, I, when is this effective? When is this rate package effective, Audra? Next year?
Yes, so that would, that would, um.
Feeds into budget, right?
Yeah, FY, that's right. We, we like to do this for budgeting purposes, but they wouldn't go into effect until next season.
Okay, uh, is, um, is Beth available?
Yes, she's right here.
Where is she?
Hi.
My Beth, Beth, would you just briefly, um, describe the, the, the philosophy of the increase, that three percent on some and not on others? And why the three percent?
Uh, just cost. It's all be basically based on, you know, um, just going up a little bit and it's mostly, it, some of our really low-end tickets, um, like the Slipway Lift and, you know, the Camden two-hour that you guys voted in last year. We want to keep that the same. Um, those kind of small, lower-end tickets, we wanted to keep very, uh, reasonable because those are for beginners and we might as well continue to, you know, welcome them to the mountain at a lower cost. Um, I did want to say that I, so I, I did give this schedule fee to Janice last week. I, I did see a typo this morning, if, if that's why you got another copy. It was because there was a typo for the field use reservations.
Oh.
Oh, well, that did, yeah.
Yeah, we did start charging, um, a hundred for youth.
Right.
And three hundred for adults this, um, this budget. Um, and I will, I, I can say that we had three youth groups, uh, pay the hundred without any issue. They were happy to do that. That was lacrosse, ultimate frisbee and football. Um, the adult, um, softball league did not return to the Snowball this summer. They had more field opportunities with COVID and the schools not using the fields for softball. And, and so they had free fields to use.
Right. Right. My comments board on the three percent proposed by, um, um, Beth?
Or category. Very, it seems like a very reasonable increase to me.
It's.
Um, is there another, um, pardon me, another, uh, minimum wage hike that will affect the Snowball next year for, in terms of employees?
Uh, we had one this, this January. It went up to twelve fifteen an hour. I, I honestly can't answer that probably because I think it's eventually going to be fifteen at some point. And I'm not sure what, what the increments are every year.
Yeah. Um, well, it makes sense to me.
Are we still doing the Free Wednesdays? The Camden residents? Is that advertised anywhere?
Um, I don't know about that.
Well, we, we, um, we didn't put a date, a date terminus on the, on the.
That's correct.
Well, it continues, Allison.
I know, but for people to actually find out about it.
Well, that's good. That's, um, it wouldn't be on the rate schedule, but, um.
I mean, it could be on the rate schedule. It could be, I just don't, haven't seen it anywhere and I keep meaning to ask. Um, and it, it just seems like some of the point is for people to actually know about it. Um.
Could be on the website.
And also, um, I was wondering what were their different hours this year? And that's just because of COVID or is that a proposal going forward?
Nope, that was, that was due to the assumptions of cutting the budget this year when we met. I don't know when it was. It was this fall, I guess. Um, when we knew we weren't going to have certain revenues, we needed to cut from, um, our expenses. And one of the assumptions was that was going to be, um, one, one shift, um, for staff so that we could lessen the contact. And, um, that was the schedule that we came up with.
Okay, and are we, so I guess I didn't realize that we were doing that when we, um. I guess I didn't realize that we were doing that when we um. Are we open later? Some somebody asked me if a question about. Having shifted the hour so that we open later and we close later sometimes. Is that, no, okay.
Um, any other comments on this rate proposal? Marco?
Um, yeah, I I wanna, I was gonna ask about what Alison asked about about the uh. Free Wednesdays and we should, that should be uh out there so people know about it. I I think we would have more use if people know about it. The other thing I have a problem with a- and and is the, all of a sudden we have a new. Um, now I just lost it again, hold on, you're in trouble. Uh, appeal season pass. Uh, it's never been charged before and all of a sudden there's a hundred dollar and a two hundred charge for that and. I have a problem with that. I've never known in in my experience, scary is you're paying basically for the lift. Um, and that's what they, and so people going up their own energy, starting somewhere crossing, going into Ragged Mountain and stuff, I don't think they should. I don't believe they should have to buy a pass to 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 travel on the snow if they're not using the lift. It's based on my experience and based on um, you know, the the people I know that.
I would say this, Mark, they are using snow that we made and.
I understand that, I have a, I have a problem with it and I, it's it's something that I feel that, you know, a lot of people pay taxes for it. Um, for the snow and it's, if there are people under their own uh, you know, snow shoeing or hiking or something like that. You know, I, it's something I will vote against this if that stays in there. It's something I feel strong about.
Okay, okay, and uh, go ahead, Beth.
Um, so as a ski statute in the state of Maine, anyone on our mountain is supposed to, during operation is supposed to have. The ski statue on them, which means a ticket or a season's pass.
That's a, a main, main rule?
Yep, the law.
Okay, how come we never did it before?
Well, that's only when we're in operation. So if somebody wants to go uphill when we're open, they can pay a ten dollar. No lift ticket and they get a ticket that has the ski statue on their ticket. Otherwise, we have folks that pay for a season's pass for the benefit of not having to get that ticket. But this community is willing to give. Give the snowball and the town something and this was their, this was what they came to me with as a reasonable cost for an uphill season's pass.
Who came to you with that?
The, the uphill community.
Is that like an organization or a?
No, it's, it's just a group of people that, that are constantly in contact with me about the, the rules and the designated trails they can use and. And, you know.
What, what happens if we find people that are not w- wearing uh the uphill pass?
Then they're not part of the group, I guess. I guess that's what this community wanted.
Okay, okay.
And we, you don't have to do it, honestly, Mark, I've been hemming and hawing about it for years because. One reason is that. If you, if we have these folks pay for an uphill pass. Um, and say we have a season like we have this year and it's really late that we finally give them access. Because we were making snow up till last Sunday, you know, and they didn't have the access that they want and so some people were just not even. Following our rules and going out there. So it would be a way to communicate with people and get their information better. But at the same time, it also gives them more of a voice.
I mean, I just got a complaint today that we didn't have this.
Yeah, I understand, I heard it.
Um, I went to Sugarloaf a few weeks ago and I thought that they did have a uphill policy, so I just looked it up while we were talking about this. Um, here's what Sugarloaf says about uh tickets and passes for uphill skiers. All uphill skiers and riders are required to have a valid season pass or day ticket. If you do not intend to ride a lift at any point during the day, you can purchase an uphill access day ticket for ten dollars from guest services. They do have something there. Um. I don't feel strongly either way. I think it makes sense to to do something, maybe we re- reduce the the fee. Um, I wonder if there's a middle ground that makes sense and accomplishes what we need to accomplish.
Alison.
Um, I have noticed comments recently thanking the snowball for. You know, coming up with a system and a schedule and um like a, a noticeable. Sort of change in trying to make this work and so that is really appreciated and um. I do understand there's kind of like a cost involved in all of this. Kind of, you know, logistical, you know, there's, there's a lot that goes into it. Um, I guess my concern is with the level of the fee. Um, this, you know, the idea for me of the snowball is that it just try, it continues to be as accessible. As possible and it was always a place that people could just go and you don't have to have enough money to ski. Um, so trying to make it, make it possible for somebody that just doesn't have money to really do any of it so that they can still enjoy the snowball. Um, I think the benefit of that is greater than like. You know, the fees that we're really gonna collect by having it be higher, I would support whatever you feel like you need to do in order to make. Contact with people and have them registered and follow the state laws and all of that, but to reduce the actual monetary. Fee to sort of a, a bare minimum would.
What do you recommend, Alison? Pick a number.
Five, I don't know, what would, depends on season passes versus tickets and I'm, I'm not sure I'm qualified to.
If you look at it this way, if it's, if, if, if the law, if the um. Ski resort that Taylor just mentioned was charging ten dollars just to go and use the place and somebody was gonna use it. Five times, that would be fifty dollars at a snowball, so. You could pick, I mean, I mean, you know, thirty bucks for, you know, a Camden resident and. You know, fifty bucks for a non-resident, just something to start the process going, it's probably, Mark, go ahead.
I would say, let's do five dollars a pass um and twenty five, twenty five and fifty. Or then maybe, maybe even in this one, we just do five dollars a pass, twenty five dollars for a, a season pass and take out the residency. Uh, part of it, keep it, keep it small, uh because when you look at the prices, you're going to snowy river, you know, the, the. The amount of snow and trails and stuff that they have there.
They designate routes, they designate the routes just like we do. You only get one, one way up and sometimes one way down.
Yeah, but it's still a much larger situation.
What do we do currently for just the day pass?
Ten dollars.
So, I mean. Can, is there a way to just make them register without paying?
Yeah, I suppose.
For the day, I mean, it's free for the day, but if you want the season pass so that you don't have to do that, register every time you.
We, we have, we have, bottom line, we have two choices, we can make it zero, leave it the way it is, or we can put some number in. Um, nominal number of, to me, of twenty five or forty dollars is reasonable for. Uh, somebody that wants to use, you know, the, the uphill, it's, it's, it's so margin. And I think it's a good idea to, to people to understand that the mountain does cost something and and we do need to. Follow regulations, but I could go either way.
I, I suggest we cut the fees in half for what they are there, cut them in half, so it's.
You're saying fifty and a hundred?
Fifty and a hundred and five dollars for a day pass.
Second.
We currently, we currently charge ten and people don't balk at that.
It's, but there's.
Really, no, I mean, it does, I, I, I don't. People do, when I go anywhere with my kids and it costs ten dollars plus ten dollars plus ten dollars, it. It makes a difference, I don't.
The ten dollars, the difference between five and ten dollars, if you've got two or three kids or a couple of, that's, that's a good amount of money for a lot of people. You know, I remember the, the tubing hill was, used to be five dollars.
Free anyway, but um, for most of them, but.
Kids aren't doing uphill, it's all adults.
Our motion is a second, uh, we, we in discussion.
Hold on, we have a hand that just went up, it looks like um. Uh, Pete Collation uh is raising his hand. Um, we haven't asked for any like public comment, I don't, would you like me to?
We, we can certainly, um, good, I'm, come on.
I'd like to hear what Pete says.
Go ahead, Pete.
Yeah, I just wanted to um, uh, as an uphill user, uh.
Pete, could you please be naming it that in your, in your presidency, please?
Oh, yeah, um, Pete Collation, uh, fourteenth Central Street, Camden.
Thank you, Pete.
Uh, as an uphill user, um, you know, an adult up your user, I'm, I'm a, I'm. I have a season pass and I'm perfectly happy to do that and I think a nominal fee for uphill users. Uh, it, it, I don't think anybody who uses the, the snowball and does uphill is opposed to a fee as an adult. Um, and, and I think that uh, children, you know, kids under the age of eighteen probably should be free. And so, you know, nominal fees, ten dollars or, you know, a, a, a season pass for uphill. I think is reasonable and most people re- realize that they benefit from the, the, the hill. Uh, even though they don't use the lift.
Thank you. Thank you, Peter. Um, so we uh, we're discussing a, a five dollar individual in a. Fifty dollar or a hundred dollars a season passes resident and our resident, any more discussion?
Uh, and I would, I would uh suggest what Pete said, uh, people under eighteen, people under eighteen are free. In case parents are taking their kids.
Okay. You're modifying the motion to that effect, got it?
Yes.
Okay, other discussion. Not hearing any roll call vote to Jenna?
Aye.
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 Alison.
Aye.
And bye bye, thank you and good night, Pete, take care. Um, onward to now, I guess that, I'm presuming the Opera House, that's when I didn't know, that's no change to rates, is that?
No, there's been no change since twenty eighteen.
Any comments, board, or?
I, I make, I make a motion, we approve the Opera House rates as uh they exist.
Second.
May, motion maiden, second, uh, discussion. Well, hearing any roll call vote, Taylor?
Aye.
Alison?
Aye.
Jenna?
Aye.
Aye.
Well, five zero, thank you, and the last one would be bringing in uh Jeremy for, please, Alison.
Yep.
Thank you.
One thing I can point out is that um, anything that has been revised is in blue.
Right.
And if it's been deleted or changed, it's in yellow.
Right.
Yeah, that, I.
Right.
This one, I could.
Yeah, there was.
This one was easier for me. Um.
Clearly, clearly, there was some uh, a major change to one of the sheets because they eliminated electrical and made it special, electricals I saw. But um, um, is Jeremy, you on board there?
I'm right here, trying to start my video, thank you. Well, I tried to make it pretty easy for you to see what was happening. Um, so um, minor changes, um, for the most part, maybe we can just start from the top. Um, demolition permit, I remember we did demolitions um. Couple of years ago.
Yeah.
We changed that fee to two fifty. Um, hindsight's twenty twenty, I mean, this always happens, I'm, I'm gonna try not to let it happen as much as it sometimes does. But for a small accessory structure that someone needs to demolish and you have to get a permit for under our ordinances. They would have to repay a permit fee of two hundred and fifty dollars just to de- to demolish a small structure, so. What I have added to this is we're gonna keep the two fifty. But demolition of accessory structures that are not in a historic district, the permit is fifty dollars.
Jeremy, would that be like if someone just wants to knock down the old shed out back that is deteriorating?
Correct.
Okay.
Yep.
Well, I guess.
Yes, but it would also cover a barn or um.
Correct.
Number of very large structures, so I'm not okay with this. At all, because it, I mean, if anything, it should be a square footage. Type of consideration, because if somebody's knocking down a big barn covered in lead paint. And all kinds of stuff, not historic or anything, but that should require more than fifty dollars worth of staff time. To just dot the i's and cross the t's, it also has a pretty big impact on neighbors. So, yes, I, I agree that if you want to take down this little tiny shed that. Yeah, it's, um, two fifty seems a little much, but it also. Accessory, accessory structure is far too broad.
We could do accessory structures over a certain size or under a certain size at fifty, I'd be okay with that. Um.
I don't know, I think that anything with lead paint has a really big.
Well.
It's, it's very important that we are trying harder to make sure that when things are knocked down, they're. Uh, all that lead paint goes into the stormwater system, I see it so frequently done poorly and I know that's not exclusively the town's responsibility. But by charging more for it, my hope would be that we could do a little bit of due diligence and. Make sure it's done properly and call the D E P if we need to call the D E P or.
I, I hear you and I, I appreciate that. I will say from my perspective, what, and, and just from a regulatory perspective. Your fee should be associated with the cost that it takes to provide that service, so um, I hear you on, on, on the. Lead issues, I mean, what we do require on buildings. Um. They have to submit the required notifications that D E P has. Um, oftentimes, since we don't have a lot of commercial properties in town and they're just residential in nature, um. You know, there's not a whole lot that goes into those um, those remediation projects or demolition projects when it comes to lead, I, I'm being honest.
It's terrible, it's.
I don't, I don't know how to handle that. Um, you know, that's probably something the state really ought to try to jump into. Um.
Well, I mean, you could, you could break this down to accessory structures and accessory structures that contain. Uh, you know, when it contaminated materials, you could break it down into two categories if you want to. And if they, any materials, it takes a lot more work than, you know, if they need lead, asbestos. You know, the things that may be involved in their early construction, they should be considered differently.
I, I agree with you, Bob, I'm, I'm just saying, it's not how it is in the regulated world when you're demolishing a small structure or even a single family home.
It's very difficult to.
I'm sure, so how many complaints are, so we've gotten a bunch of complaints that people just want to knock down their shed and annoying that they have to pay two hundred and fifty dollars. It's probably annoying to them that they would have to get tested for lead or any of that stuff. Too, I mean, really, we should do it based on a bunch of criteria, but how big of a problem is this for you currently?
Um, it's really hard for us, um, when, when someone comes in and we know that the building out back is a small garden shed of some sort. That requires a demolition permit or even a small single car garage that's been there for a while and it needs to go away, that. It's just, you know, no longer usable and we're telling them the permit fee's two hundred and fifty dollars. Um, that's, I've had people walk away and say, okay, we're not demoing it right now.
Oh, well.
That's happened this, I know, but it's just falling into the ground, you know, um. I, I hear you, I, I.
How many times is it really happening? It is, I, I, I'm.
This summer, three or four times this year, this summer.
Well, could we figure out just a way, I don't know if we were gonna settle it, um. Tonight, of course, I could just be outvoted too and that would be fine, but we did put some. I put a, a lot of energy into discussing this the last time and so. I mean, if, if you maybe could have just talked about it, maybe we could come up with something that does make sense, so.
Yeah, I.
When you're taking down a massive structure too, there should probably be a little bit. More involved, it probably should have been more than a two hundred and fifty dollar fee to take down the middle school because look at all the energy that goes into that, so. Maybe if we just come up with a square footage and hazardous material.
On this, let's ask this question, on this first sheet, which is the town of Camden permit fee schedule, is there any other comments by the board on any other items been changed?
I'm, I'm really fascinated by this clearing of vegetation.
Yeah, so that was a permit fee that's always been in place and we had, if you're clearing vegetation in the shoreline zone, you're supposed to pay a permit fee of a hundred dollars.
Right.
Um, some clearing of vegetation is not, we don't get in the middle of and don't regulate other than we have performance standards that people need to comply with.
Right.
So it kind of depends on the scale of vegetation removal. Um. And so what I was trying to do there and last two years ago or a year ago, we added minor and major shoreline fees. And I was just gonna roll that, that clearing for vegetation into the minor and just get rid of the, the major. Because what majors are is when we're really having to review. You know, the ground coverage, the, where the high water is and we're reviewing trees, point system removal on tr- on tree of trees. Um, and, you know, reviewing how much area of patio they have, how much area of deck they have, how much driveway. Um, those are quite involved, um, check, so that's where the hundred dollars is, but the clearing for develop or vegetation is pretty minor. That's what included it.
Now it's fifty dollars now.
And now it's fifty, the only other change um is something that has been plaguing us and plaguing this kind of work for a long time is when. Um, contractors call us for required inspections. We set aside time for those inspections, we go out and do those inspections and the contractor, whether it be the builder. The insulator, the plumber or the electrician says, ah, we're not ready. Can you come back tomorrow? And we say, well, you called us for the inspection today, so we just spent time going out there. Um, it, it is. Um, it, it is, it's a problem, um, and a lot of, lot of places are going down the road of having reinspection fees.
Right.
Uh, or if we inspect something and it's wrong and we have to come back tomorrow or three days from now. And from my perspective, the, the property owner or the project should be paying for the town services. Our services and it shouldn't be on the taxpayers to kinda pick that up, um, on the other end, so that's why I'd like to have a fifty dollar inspection fee, I will guarantee you that contractors, I mean, they'll just pass it on to their
Yeah, that's
Likely, um, but over time, the contractors are starting to, um you know, they're, they're getting permits before they start their work, like prior, they were get, they're getting their permits after the fact. They're starting to have a little more compliance with them upfront.
Right.
Starting to understand that it's a problem for us to just keep coming back when they're not ready for inspection after they called us.
Right, is the, is the after fact multiplier always been two point five?
Yes.
Correct.
And that's it on the first page.
Um, I don't know if you can see my hand or
I'm sorry.
Jump in or, um, is there a way to differentiate or do we differentiate, um, between homeowners who are needing inspections or
Yeah, Allison, I mean we, um, work very hard with homeowners when they're working on their projects and we give them as much guidance. And, I mean, we're not gonna, we won't indiscriminately always charge the, I mean, we always know that kind, much like now, if someone starts a project and they don't have their permit, they may not know, have known they needed the permit, we may not institute that two and a half you know, times penalty because they just didn't know, but the reality is, is it's for those people that are just kind of these routine. It's routine, this is part of their way they operate and it's just costing us, us, um, additional funds. So we would work with a property owner, Allison, um, if they called us and we're like, we have to come back. Um, we're not gonna, if that happens repeatedly with those folks, we're gonna say, you know we're helping you, we're giving you the shot, we're trying to be here, we've gotta somehow get some reinspection fee from you after we've been there ten times. Getting at the insulation.
Yeah, I just see a big, really big difference between how we should be treating these contractors that are making a ton of money off of remodeling kitchens five thousand times. And versus just the person who's just trying to do it and it feels like
Understood.
The town can be a little bit heavy handed sometimes anyway, um.
I think we do have, um, like Randy would say, the police have prosecutorial discretion, I mean, we have that same ability. With contractors and homeowners every day and we try to balance what those homeowners really know and what they understand of the code or the process. We're, you know, so I, I think you should feel comfortable that we can manage that pretty easily, Allison, and your neighbor, if they're doing a project um, is not gonna get a reinspection fee tomorrow, um, if they call us, um, it's really about those kinda, the things that are happening on a routine basis with the same contractor, we're just coming out there over and over and over. Um, and it's just, it's gotta stop and if it's not gonna stop, they should pay for it.
Mm-hmm, yep, sounds good to me.
Okay.
Next page.
Well, why don't we take one page at a time?
Okay.
We're not gonna be able to move on something unless we
Why don't we, why don't we just, um, remove the demo piece for now and when we're ready, I'll come back with that.
Um, you can
Second, so moved.
Second.
Yeah, there was, I motioned and
I seconded.
Okay.
Approve page one with the exception of the demolition change.
Exactly.
Second, roll call, a discussion, roll call vote, uh, Allison.
Aye.
Aye.
Uh, okay Taylor, um, I'm sorry. Getting late, um, Mark?
Aye.
Jenna?
Aye.
Uh, I five zero, thank you, okay, next page, which would be
Uh, page two.
Let's, I'm gonna
Page two is the planning board of the fee schedule, the planning board fees.
Wait, wait, what happened electrical permit?
Well, that's, that's down at the bottom Bob, so sorry about that.
Oh, sorry, sorry, sorry.
Off of page two.
Okay, Camden fee schedule.
Yep, so we have planning board revision, I added or amendment. Um, and this is for subdivision, um, we don't have, there's no fee in there for an amendment, um, so I just felt that we do amendments all the time, if a property line gets changed a buys and a budding property owner wants to merge it into their lot
Yep.
Through that process, so I just added amendment to that. Um, full site plan review changed from two seventy-five to four hundred. Um, that may seem like a lot, but I will tell you, I mean, after doing I'm in Morse project, the Tom Headstrom project, I mean, it requires a fair amount of time, not just my time, but you know the planning board's time, we're, we're spending a lot of time doing reviews on these things and for projects of that require site plan review, I brought this to you guys a, a year or so ago and I had it at five hundred and at that time, you didn't want me to go down that road, so I change it, but I do feel like, um, a four hundred dollar fee is totally appropriate, if you look at other communities around Belfast, their minimum fee is like sixteen hundred dollars um, to go to the planning board for a site plan review.
Right.
Um, it, it's very steep, we're, we're pretty low, our fees are pretty low on this regard.
Um, I, yeah, I totally get that for a lot of the types of projects you're talking about, but the threshold for site plan review is a new commercial building over one thousand square feet, right?
Yeah.
So, that also encompasses just the small business that wants to build a garage, um, so to me, there's just a huge difference in the magnitude of all of this and I'd rather be in a position to be able to truly charge the appropriate fee to a, a, one of some of these larger, not to single out Lyman Morse, but you know, that, that is
Big projects.
You know, bit, right, big projects that are complicated or just large in nature. And, and be able to charge them more even than so is there any way that we could just structure that a little bit more to?
Um, sure, um.
Like a tiered system based on whatever is appropriate?
Yeah.
It probably goes down to site size.
Yeah, it would probably be site size of, you know, could be projects of ten thousand square feet or more, need is, is four hundred or five hundred and those under I, I can, why don't you let, let's continue with this, I'll take that under advisement, I've got no site plans pending right now, so why don't we, um, work on that and I'll work on that along with the other one and I'll come back to you if that's okay?
Yep, it is.
I'd rather have a good, rather than trying to make it work right now, I
Yep.
Okay. Next one.
Yeah, I think we've covered all of the, uh, of the, of the permit.
Don't I have to vote on that one?
Hold on.
No, we, we're holding it till next time.
Hold on.
Oh, but just that, okay, just that page.
Yeah, so mine, I'm gonna keep going, so we're gonna exclude that one from your motion on page two. Minor revisions, that's a new change in our site plan amendment, um, provision that the voters approved, um, in June. Um, so we didn't have a fee for minor revisions that are approved by staff only, so that's a hundred dollars is what I'm proposing. Um, that, that is adequate to provide, you know, our, to cover the cost for our services to process a minor revision. Interesting one down in the board of appeals, our current fee schedule has a thing called in parentheses, accept CEO appeal. So there's a public hearing fee, if, if someone appeals the decision of the code officer and the code officer's doing, you know, following the law, following the code, following the ordinance. And if someone wants to appeal their decision, under our current fee schedule, the public hearing fee of a hundred and fifty dollars waived.
Right.
And there is no regulatory reason, I asked Bill about state statute on that, I mean, this is, it's bonkers that, that someone, the appellant would not have to pay for the hearing that they're requesting. Um, so that's all we're asking them to do in this case.
Right.
So I'm gonna delete that section and requires no added change. In the other section, wireless tower, I just added the word antenna, um, and this is in addition to other permits. This is for when someone wants to, uh, company wants to co-locate an antenna on um, a tower or a building, right now, there's no talk about co-location in our ordinance, but we don't actually give it a fee schedule, so it would be assumed that they're paying a, a tower fee in addition to other permits, so it's just, um, um, this was for antenna, because the towers are separately. If you look, of new towers under site plan review are three hundred dollars.
Right.
Um, so this would be for ta- tower antenna. And then the last fee change would be our electrical permit and that's kind of a wholesale change um, in from what traditionally has been done. Um, right now, and that's why I included it, Bob and, and Mark and Jenna and Taylor and Allison, because the the, um, if you look at our permit, it's very strange how we do this, so we have so when you're putting a new home in, you're paying fifteen dollars for your service. Oftentimes, you're putting a temporary service in to do the install, to do the construction. And if you're putting a heat pump in, you're paying an additional fifteen dollars and paying fifty cents for every receptacle outlet that's in the house, I mean, it's a bonkers way to, um, really try to, um, assess a fee. Um, a dollar for a heating unit, fifty cents for every switch. Um, it's, it's really bizarre, so what I've proposed, and a lot of communities are doing similar fees. Um, such, similar communities to ours, um, they're doing flat, you know, flat fees of fifty dollars. Um, for additional wiring, renovation, service, a new or a temporary or an upgrade. Um, generators, heat pumps, solar, et cetera, uh, is fifty dollar flat fee. Um, and then a brand new home or a whole house renovation, which would be like a gut rehab, would be a hundred dollar flat fee. Um, and non-residential, commercial and multifamily, the fee would be seventy-five dollars plus half of one percent of the cost of the job.
A question on your new home or whole house, what about a half house renovation?
Yeah, that would be residential renovation up top, Bob, I had additional wiring or renovation, that's a fifty dollar flat fee.
Wait, Jeremy, what, what does it mean, non-residential, commercial slash multifamily, what's mu- multifamily, non-residential?
Um, anything over, um, two units, so three or more units would be considered multifamily, comes under a different electrical code, there's different requirements.
Oh, because the non-residential makes it seem like it's
Right.
Not a residential.
I understand. Our zoning ordinance talks about non-residential being some residential.
Okay, we're confused by that.
My changes.
It's like for-profit residential, some, right, or?
Yeah.
So, those are my proposed changes, um, if you like page two, we could just do page two with the exclusion of the site plan or full site plan review fee. And we'll bring that back to you at a later date.
So moved.
Um. Does everybody else understand that electrical stuff, Ralph?
Do I have a second on this question, this motion or not?
Second.
A second.
Now, Allison, discussion, go ahead.
Two things, I wish I knew why there was a, um, exception for the CEO appeal. I feel like my instinct is telling me that maybe somebody was concerned about not making, you know, the ability to appeal a CEO decision. Not making that dependent on financial resources. But I don't I, you know, I just, if I
They're already required to pay an administrative appeal fee, so if you're appea- appealing a CEO decision. That's an administrative appeal, so you're paying two twenty-five no matter what. And then you're saying, okay, I paid that fee, but now the town, you gotta pick up the pu- the hearing fee on the, on the, my appeal. I'm appealing a decision of the code officer and I'm gonna make the town pick up the fee, the cost of the public here. I mean, I just have an issue with it, Allison.
Well, that's, I've never seen that, uh, you might get the CEO all the power they have, that's their, that's their role and responsibility.
That's their role and, and if you're gonna appeal it, that's your decision to appeal it, it shouldn't be the city or the town to try to
Okay, I think what I, what I said was, I just wish I knew why, it was in there from the beginning, so
And I
Nobody here knows why and nobody agrees with it, um, but
Okay, I did try to find the history and no one knew. Asked, I talked to Bill Kelly about it, I chatted with Jeannie about it, she had no idea, she said it's always been there.
Okay, fine.
Trying to clean things up.
Any other discussion? Roll call vote, Mark?
Aye.
Taylor?
Aye.
Jenna?
Aye.
Allison?
Aye.
Bob, I also, uh, five zero, thank you, uh, one, one next qualification, that's the end now of the fee discussions. Um, we move on to the, uh, one, uh, Vittler license for Alan Turtle. As I recall, getting back to my agenda here, yes.
Yes.
I'll make a motion, we approve the victory license for Alan Turtle.
Second.
Second.
Motion made in second, roll call, Taylor?
Aye.
Bob, I, Art?
Aye.
Jenna?
Aye.
Allison?
Aye.
Five zero, on to approval of the Charter Commission's request for an extension. That's till, uh, end of twenty-two, is that correct, Audra?
I was just trying to find the exact date that they gave.
I couldn't, is that in the packet?
I don't know. Yeah, I just looked again.
It's not, it's not. Yeah, I can pull up, um, Deb Dodge's email, I believe she sent, and I thought it was December uh, twenty-two, but, um
Do we have to do this tonight? I really feel like with the Charter Commission, I wanna understand the rules and read it.
We can do it on the twenty-third, they just need to have it done, I, I said we would do it in February, I didn't say what day.
I would, I'm not saying no, I just would like to actually read.
We wanna make sure I have the right date and it should have been in the packet. We'll get in the packet on
The notion that we table the extension of the Charter Commission deadline until February twenty-third.
Second.
April twenty-third, second, motion made in second, did, I'm presuming, but okay, with April twenty-third, the next select board meeting.
February twenty-third. We're still thinking.
I don't even know what day it is, um, okay, uh, roll call vote, Taylor?
Aye.
Jenna?
Aye.
Allison?
Hi.
Bob, I, four, five zero.
Hey, hey, what about me?
Oh, Marco, I, I thought you were sleeping there. Five zero, thank you for reminding me you're still there, um, last item on the action list is the, uh, rescheduling the date for our uh, for our tannery workshop, um, ideally, I'd like to propose if we can to find, if we can, to find a day next week. Um, that could be tough, but what's the board's opinion about a day next week, I know we all have different things on.
I would say you really only have two choices.
Okay.
Um, because the fifteenth is the President's Day holiday and the eighteenth, there's a planning board meeting.
Days of those.
Sixteenth is Tuesday, seventeenth is Wednesday.
Those are our options?
No, those, those are not
No, those are our options.
Those are our options.
Say again, Tuesday.
Or Wednesday.
How about Tuesday?
Both of those work for me.
What?
Both work for me.
Tuesday.
I want, hold on, one.
I can do, I can do Tuesday.
Last time we planned it, it's just the clock, Allison, you can help change that. Um, Jeremy?
Yeah, that sounds great, I will reach out to if you guys
We, we haven't decided yet, so before you should know.
I gotta let everyone know, I mean, that's just
I'm a little worried about, so Worried about that, so one, less than one week notice to these people, so it has to be subject to that, of course, but it seems like Tuesday, six P M. Next week is the option I'm hearing, is that true? Any objections?
Does that give us enough time to notice people?
Yeah, well, that's a good question, we, we have to do it, if we don't, we're likely to fall into the next week.
Unless we choose Wednesday, that still gives us seven days.
Wednesday, I can't.
Okay.
Not that I have to be there, but I
I can do Tuesday.
Okay, let's, let's, uh, let's, let's peg Tuesday, um And that date is the sixteen. Okay, uh, February sixteenth, the day after the holiday, at six P M, we will so notice these. And if there are any serious issues, let us know, Jeremy, please.
I'll let you know tomorrow.
Thank you, bud.
Yeah.
Onto our discussion items, we have, um, a discussion on the two thousand twenty-one committee hiatus. Um, Audra, will you, uh, you wrote a memo, an intro of that, um, uh, just highlight a few of the
Yeah, I mean, I, I, this is something that we've talked about over multiple meetings and we really haven't been able to come to much of a um, decision or, yeah, the, it doesn't seem as if the board's been able to come to much of a decision on this, um. You know, I've spoken with some board members, you know, individually, and I know everybody's sort of grappling with this, but, um uh, you know, the fact remains, I'm still getting a lot of requests from committees to move their stuff forward, there's still an expectation of Janice um, scheduling and facilitating Zoom meetings, um just all the stuff we still talked about, and I think that, you know, there's a lot going on, I, I, it's not um, news to anyone here, and I just think that unless you're giving committees specific direction to do things. Just having them meet for the sake of meeting and generating ideas and projects without any ability to sort of commit to doing anything is just going to it's, it's gonna continue to breed a lot of frustration amongst committee members, which I think is understandable, so you know, I think unless you've got specific things that you're assigning for committees to work on, it's better to just put them on a hiatus and you know, not have an expectation that they're going to sort of consistently meet and generate ideas and projects and things for us to be working on. Because we just can't keep up with that.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Marco.
Uh, you see this as being able, just a a temporary thing, a hiatus until COVID is gone and done, we're back meeting in the comments room. Will that be a better time?
I'd say it's bad practice to just have a meeting for the sake of meeting and generating all this stuff that you have no path forward for them with. I just don't think that's a great way to treat people who are volunteering their time to the town.
Ms. Allison.
Yeah, I think we've all struggled with wanting to value the contributions that often have been made and are made by committees. But also recognizing that it's oftentimes really frustrating for both committees and the select board. I've heard a lot recently from committee members who have good ideas and things that they are wanting to move forward that they've brought up within their committee because it's sort of a relevant tangentially related topic. And it's, you know, gain traction or not gain traction in the committee and then risen to this level where it comes to staff. All of this without it ever coming to the select work. And I think in a lot of cases, a much better way to to process these ideas that come up, not just from committee members, but all over the community, is to approach a select board member and say, hey, wouldn't it be great if we could have some public art over here? Or has the select board considered putting this on its agenda? Or boats are going too fast in the harbor, and I think that the town should do something about it. I'm finding that a lot of things are actually not coming to us to be able to say, yeah, that's a great idea. Let's put that on an agenda so that we can talk about it in this, you know, larger public forum and agree. Is this a priority for the town or isn't it? And then, you know, in some cases, send that to a committee. It's, I would propose that we take, as Audra said, a hiatus from the committees just meeting until the end of the fiscal year. Let us get through budget time. There are so many committees and a lot of the time, you know, budget, the budget committee is one that's going to pop up now, and a lot of town resources need to go to being able to answer budget committee questions. We need people to be paying attention to that. We need to to be developing the budget, and then we need to be discussing it, and then we need to be getting it passed. And during that time, the committees are free to to meet and do their thing as individuals and organize themselves just like anybody else does. And if there's something that needs to come to us, anybody is free to approach a select word member and say, hey, I really think this should go to a, you know, be raised as an agenda item and set and sent to a committee. But until then, what we're doing, it's very unfair because it's this idea factory of pretty good ideas, all these emails that get generated all the time, and then there's no way of us determining which of those items should take staff time or not. And so it puts Audra in a difficult position. And we we have these, and and then we're not in a position even to be able to say, oh, we need to create this other committee or create that other committee. We're just completely saturated. And so I don't, I don't see it as a as anything else than just a pause so that we can really evaluate what the projects are that we want to be moving forward.
I agree, Allison. Taylor, you had your hand up. I still have your hand up.
Yeah, I I agree with the idea of the hiatus. I think that in a general sense, the way that I envision how committees should work is, you know, we we often say that, you know, right, in town, we have commissions, we have boards, and we have committees. So we're talking about the committees, which I think by definition are intended to serve at the pleasure of the select board. And to me, that's kind of a highbrow way of describing it that I don't love to use, but the reality of what that means is that those committees are working on select board identified priorities for business of the town that we need the committees to help us with, either by their makeup of expertise in a certain area or just that there are so many different things that need to be done. We need committee help sometimes to focus on specific things, work out whatever that is, and then come to us with a resolution or a recommendation. But that seed of work should begin and then end with the select board. The we're we're very lucky in this town, I believe, to have so many skilled and highly educated people in a vast majority of areas and have a lot of these people on our committees. So I don't want to undercut the value that our committees give to us. But I do think that if the committees aren't working effectively and efficiently in general, just by virtue of how the process works of them doing work, then it doesn't matter how many great people you have on the committee. If the process isn't efficient, then it's it's not working. Right. So I agree with putting them on hiatus until July first. What I would ask is that I think it makes sense for us to request that the committees, probably through their chairs, if they have items that they do feel are priorities that they should be working on, they send them to us so that as a select word, we can say no, we don't want you working on these three things, or yes, we do want you working on these things, and we think they are priorities that you should work on now. Or they can wait until after July first, when all the committees either come off of hiatus, or we might decide that there's a committee that's on hiatus and doesn't really need to be meeting again, because there's not necessarily a pressing matter that requires their attention. I think that sending things to committees starts with a select board on specific issues.
Well, as a second mark, as a segue to what you said, Taylor, I I certainly agree that about the definition of a committee, and it's kind of highbrow, but it is what it is. That's what they're there for. And I don't believe we're being fair to the committee members. I believe we've we've, we, it's our job to make sure that they're working on things that we believe are some of the priorities collectively, is at least three of the five of us to be worked on and to assign these tasks. I don't believe, by the way, in that in the process we've been dealing with, we tried a couple of things. We tried to revise a couple of years ago, the committee guidelines, limited effect. We tried to bring the committee chairs to the select board to talk about priorities and what they thought should be priorities. Limited effect. I think at the end of the day, we're not being fair to these wonderful people because they want to sink their teeth into something the town really needs. And that comes from us. And I think that the I do not agree, though, with the hiatus having a date certain ending. I think we can revisit the the whole action on July first and certainly make changes, but I think dates certain scare me because we're in a little we're testing something new here. It may work well. We may want to continue it. It may be terrible and cause all kinds of disruption. We may want to end it even sooner. So I would suggest if we do go with a hiatus that we encourage not only committee members, but to Allison's point about individuals in the town who have, you know, issues, they don't really know where to go with them. In some cases, they've gone to committees, and they should be coming to us and saying, this is an important problem in downtown, whatever it may be. Downtown Camden or wherever neighborhood. And and I think we need to open that door a little wider to bring those people so they can come to any one of us and say, it doesn't have to be the liaison, by the way. It can be any one of us and say, we think this issue is important. And then that select member or members agree, and want to request it to be on an agenda in one of our meetings. That's what we'll do. And then we can have a discussion about it. I think that that's just, to me, that's just a much smarter approach than, first of all, limiting in the time period. We're trying a new model, a model that I believe will work and should work. Remember, we also in parallel with that, we created some task force. So some of these things may not like the broadband task force we created. We didn't create, quote unquote, a committee for that. We use Rockport and Camden expertise and industry expertise to to try to put some flesh in the bone of that special area. Those options remain also. And to me, people who are bringing these things to the table from the public probably have a knowledge in some of these areas and should participate. And they don't have to be on a committee. So I feel strongly, we should do the hiatus. I feel strongly, we should encourage all the committees and all these great people to come to us individually. They don't have to come to, you know, a board meeting to do it. Just say, look at Bob, Mark, whoever. I think this is really important. Could if you concur, could you bring it to the attention of the select board and possibly get it on an agenda? Now I cut you off, Mark, sorry.
I'm certainly the most uncomfortable with this, and I got it under things. I'm fine with the hiatus until July first. But I have to say, I think we're in some respects, being a little too controlling over giving people an opportunity to contribute to the town. I I was on committees for years before I joined the select board, and I saw a lot of positive things come from, you know, for instance, the Opera House Committee. And and I understand Audra's situation is that she has a very limited town staff, and they have been inundated with requests from committees, and some of the requests have been not, I I don't think that not the most serious kind of proposals that we need to look over. So I understand that part of it, and I think that's what we need to create. But for instance, the Opera House Committee helps the Opera House manager in tremendous ways in terms of running the Opera House. Some of the great things we that have come in these last few years, the new streetlights, a solar farm and stuff have come from the Energy Committee, and it started with their ideas. You know, so I'm uncomfortable with cutting people off because I think they've been, it's the manner in which we do it, but I'm, you know, I think the committees for years, I think this board and I'm, you know, the person that's worked with a couple of different boards, this board has had more problem with committees than any of the previous ones that I've seen, either from the select board basis or from being on a committee. And it makes me a little uncomfortable.
So I see, I think, I think Bob is, I can't tell if he's calling on me or Taylor.
No, I I called on Allison because I muted myself because the pipes were banging.
Go ahead, Allison.
Yeah. I think that part of this is that the town needs to catch up on some of the projects that have already been initiated by committees. This is we have, this board has moved forward a lot of the things that previously were just talked about. And the we can make everybody feel good and say, yeah, we're just going to send staff people to all these committee meetings. We're just going to talk and talk and talk. But it is completely ridiculous that we haven't updated our comprehensive plan to include stuff about sea level rise. We've had all of these amazing groups, you know, the Watership School, look at that. They're not an official town committee. They're doing awesome stuff. They've brought us all of these reports that have said, you need to plan for sea level rise. You need to do this. You need to do that. Well, we're actually finally doing that instead of just saying, rah rah rah, let's just say we support it, but then actually not do the planning that makes this impactful. And we're we're kidding ourselves by by just it's like this feel-good thing, but then we are not doing the hard work of updating our ordinances to reflect the recommendations that we've received from committees. The planning board site plan review does not include any criteria for energy efficiency. That is completely ridiculous, based on all of the input that we've received. Very, very good input from committees that have brought these issues up, but we just haven't caught up on the enforcement side. And so all of the, we're we're just allowing ourselves to be diluted to the point where we can kind of make ourselves feel good, but then we're not doing what needs to to happen. And so I don't think that we are in any way shutting down voices. There are, I know people, many people who have gotten off of committees because they really want to work on one specific thing, and they don't want to have to sit through the whole long agenda of all these other things. And they provide amazing recommendations in writing, some of which I regurgitate verbatim and propose at select board meetings when I have a chance to. So and we can all do that. There's a small group of people that is not a committee that's doing excellent work right now on researching community land trusts for affordable housing. At some point, might need to be an actual committee. In the meantime, they're providing doing really valuable work for the town on behalf of the town. And we want to be in a a position to take action, but they don't need to be a town committee. We get we get amazing suggestions from students from all over the place. And to say, I I feel like we have created this like monopoly on where, you know, how public input is kind of generated and digested and contributions are made, it's all through the committees, and we're excluding a lot of other people. So any one of these committee members, it's actually a lot more effective sometimes, instead of just continuing to bring it up in their committee meetings, than to bring it up to one of us who might be willing to elevate the issue very quickly, or might have the knowledge to say, this actually ties into this other thing that we're doing, and let's quickly get it on agenda so we can make progress. It's in the interest of moving forward a lot of these things that I I want to do this, not not because I want to shut anybody out.
Can I just say, it's getting to the point where it and all of you have been very great about asking me, when we get to a point where we've just got too much going on, I need to say something. I am saying something to you right now. I need your help. It's getting unmanageable. You've assigned, we've got projects we've already committed to. You've all assigned me goals. I can't do all these extra things. You need to, like I said, you need to pick either I do all these extra things that come out of committees, and I drop your goals. And even still, the plate is completely full. We've got so many really big projects on. You all know that. We and we've committed to moving things forward. I I need to catch up. I can't keep with this cycle of constantly generating ideas. I'm trying to implement things that have already come out of the select board, have already come out of committees, we're working on them. And then a new idea pops up, and we have to drop everything to address that in one way or the other. It's just not tenable right now, and it won't be for for a while. And even when we get to a point where we've cleared the deck a little bit, I still need you prioritizing what these groups are going to work on, because we can't just have, you know, a free-for-all, because the deck gets really full very quickly.
Thanks, Jenna. One second, Taylor. Jenna, do you generally concur with the idea of the hiatus?
I do, and and I've put some real thought into it because I have I have a lot of my my gut feeling blinds me with Mark, but I am hearing what Audra is saying. I respect that. I think in the in what Allison's saying, in the interest of moving forward and getting things done, I think this is important and it needs to happen. I I'm not one percent comfortable with it, but I think it's necessity.
Thank you, Jenna. I'm sorry, Taylor. I just wanted to get a chance for Jenna. Go ahead.
A couple of thoughts. I want to read Anita Barosia Scott had a comment in the Q and A. Is it really best to treat all committees generically with a hiatus without addressing the issue in a more direct way? So that Anita just had that to say.
Go ahead. Go ahead, Taylor.
But I kind of want to respond to that because that's something that I brought up when we've discussed this in the past. Because I think it is probably, it is fair to say that some committees are are more effective than others simply by their makeup and the way that they're designed. And so I agree with putting committees, putting a blanket hiatus on committees right now. I think it's okay in this instance to hit the pause button on committees, and it gives us the ability to pull back, look at all the committees together, but then to what I think Anita is getting to, and what I agree with, I would like to hear from those committees, these are what our priorities are. This is what we want to work on. This is what we've been working on so that we, as a select board, can look at that and say, great, this is important stuff that we have already identified as priorities and either send them off to continue their work, or that gives us the ability to look at those committees that we feel are taking town staff time unnecessarily and taking away from other priorities that we have identified. I think that that's an important thing to do to be able to make sure that we're not adversely affecting committees that are already doing good work for us.
Well, I'm clearly hearing a consensus, uncomfortable as it may be, that we would apply this hiatus. Well, we'll say till July first, as I'm hearing. We can revisit it at that point, and hopefully we'll have some experience between now and then on on this doesn't preclude committee people from talking to each other or commiserating or, you know, whatever they want to do. But I would agree. That's the consensus I'm hearing, Mark.
There are a couple of comments. Uh, there are a couple of comments. Um, Pete Collagen talks about uh, the Energy Committee has been planning to do upcoming library presentations hosted by the Energy Committee. Um, now that has nothing to do with, you know, the select board, it doesn't involve town staff, they've been working out with the library. Um, and so, you know, if people have things, you know, like I said, the Opera House Committee doesn't really work with uh, doesn't really interfere with the town stuff, they help the director. So how do we frame things where people have things going on, the downtown design team is working on the uh, the the mural for the wall, which is private, uh privately funded, privately, private operation. How do we direct those people to do things for the town that they're doing that don't involve the town staff or town select board?
Allison, do you have a comment?
I just lost it.
Yeah, I mean, I I, Mark, you I get all those questions and they're all, I I frankly don't know anything about the Energy Committee making a presentation as a town committee to the library. I would love to have heard about that as an example. As to why they're, why they're speaking for the town when we don't know, I don't even know what they're speaking about.
It that they're not, they're not doing it themselves. They've organized some, some, they've organized some speakers al- along with the library to make presentations about energy. Is that the Energy Committee?
There's nothing, that has nothing to do with the Energy Committee, Mark. It has nothing to do with the Energy Committee. They're aligned with speakers to provide some information. They should go ahead and do it, let those speakers speak to the library. That's nothing to do with the committee, Allison.
I mean, I think it's important to realize that we're not asking any individual committee members to stop working on things that they care about. That's awesome that speakers are lined up at the library I to talk about. You know, I think there was some energy efficiency auctions and educating the public about rebates was one of the things I heard about and that's wonderful. The library has taken that on. They have their process where they vet what is worthy content, what isn't. Um, all of these individuals that we have in our community that are associated with these issues should continue to work on those things. It's very, it's also very possible that um in two weeks, a month, as let's just say, for instance, this natural gas thing um is that's bubbling up and all of a sudden we're like, oh, gosh, is this good or is this bad? Or what does this mean for carbon um planning? Maybe we need to say to our Energy Committee, could you please um write something about what you think about this? Could you please, um, we would, we would like to encourage you to develop a regional group. Um, I mean, this is an opera, this is gonna be a Belfast Camden Rockford thing. Maybe there's a group of Energy Committee people that needs to form regionally and we might say that, we might say, we really need to have our finger on what is going on at the state level. I don't have time to follow all that, but I would like to be alerted when there is a time when the select board might should weigh in on some kind of legislation. So it's, we do need people to help us with things and we need people to tell us what we should be trying to do. But in order to be able to actually move forward with these things and be in a position where we can take recommendations and move things forward, we need to agree ahead of time on what those things are. Like, for example, with C D O C, we had this problem, shoot, gosh, how are we gonna evaluate all these proposals? We had a group of people that we could say, I think this group of people could really help us do this and we knew that ahead of time, so we were prepared to really take their recommendations seriously. That's all we're saying here. So some of these committees might be back next month on a very targeted thing that we can really.
Yep.
Yep, well, not, we're not trying to shut down. I totally agree. You just said, Allison, a hundred percent. I wish I could repeat it as well as you do, but I totally agree. Uh, Taylor?
Um, yeah, in in thinking about um how we frame this hiatus, I think we need to give ourselves a little bit of flexibility in that, um, you know, Mark's point about design teams specifically with a mural, that's something we've all heard quite a bit about. Um, and I, and I think if they're gonna do that in a way that's not gonna take up a lot of town staff time or in a way that is is moving forward, the priority that we've already set forth, we shouldn't hold that back. So I'll probably, I'll I'll make a motion. I I guess at some point when people are done discussing this, but I think what might make sense.
This is, you don't need a motion here. Uh, we just have to make a statement as to what we want to, there are committees, they work for us. If we want to put them in a hiatus for, you know, till July first and but I agree, they can come back with any feedback at any point in time. Next week is fine through one of us to bring it to us to to bring it to the table for action. We're done, we're not shutting them down. That's not appropriate.
I think I need, I think we need to be clear about exactly what we're saying, which is the point that I'm getting to is I I think it makes more sense for us to say that committees are are on hiatus indefinitely until they hear otherwise from the select board. And the reason I say it like that is so that um committees are on hiatus unless we hear from the Energy Committee tomorrow. That they have these specific things they'd like to work on and then we can say, yes, work on, these are priorities, go go forth and conquer. Um, whereas other committees that don't necessarily have anything important to do right now, and there may be some, um, we don't have action to take on those.
Yeah.
I am a little uncomfortable with the the idea of that we're encouraging them all to go out and tell us, tell us what they want to be working on because it's right now, we can't do a good job finishing things like the streetlight conversion and you know, pave arounds and crosswalks and things like that if we take on additional tasks. I think things like the mural can be dealt with by um, somebody does need to decide whether it is helpful to have the design committee involved in that at this point, or whether it's a design committee member coordinating with a town, with a, with a private landowner. And I think we can have those conversations with the individual committee members who have.
That's kind of my point. We can say no. It gives us the ability to say no.
But it just seems a little bit formal to have them say, okay, well, if we're we're telling them not to meet, but then we're telling them to come up with a proposed work plan. Um.
If you would like to meet, come to us with with the reason why and what, otherwise you're not meeting.
Yeah, I think that they need to come to 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 one of us and have it be, if if at least it it's a pretty low bar to just have, to have to come to one select board member who then says, I'm concerned about this issue, can we have it on an agenda? And so if you're able to convince one select word that, you know, then we can talk about it on the next agenda. Okay, here's something that this committee was working on. And let's all talk about it together, whether, how this fits into town goals and then it's a a transparent process. I just think there has to be a process that they can use to communicate that rather than what normally happens, which is somebody, um, the committee reaches out to town staff in some capacity for some current kind of a status update, or they say, I want to do, we want to do this. Can you put this on an agenda? Um.
I think you're saying the same thing. I agree.
I think so. I just don't want it to be a town staff con.
I'm saying, yeah, we are putting, just putting, just putting things on hiatus and and at any moment, uh, anybody can come to me or you, whoever, and say, uh, to Mark, whatever, and this is what we want to do and get it to us and we'll get it on an agenda and the select board will decide, at least three of us, minimum, to to go forward with that for the committee. It's as simple, it's as simple, we're making this way too complicated.
I mean, I do, but I do think there is some like devil in the detail stuff because people are working on, like I can think of the historic resources committee.
Yep.
Right now, for example, um, they're working on they would really like us to move forward, some of the other things like the the historic preservation ordinance, which keeps getting kicked down the road. I think they'd be very happy if we would focus on that at some point, um, which we've all agreed is a priority, yet haven't had time to do. But, you know, they're they're collecting research for the Elm, possible Elm Street Historic District.
Right.
There is no reason that as individuals, any of that needs to stop. It's valuable. We can work on. You know, they they communicate over email. Anita's asking, um, do you have any problem with the committee continuing to meet and or work on their projects as long as the town staff is not involved in communication is clear? I think um, what we're also hoping to get away from is that that there's a lot that goes along with an official town committee, requirements for us to post minutes, agendas, freedom of access requests, um, it all has to be on the town calendar. If we're live streaming everything because that's been something that's been brought up so much before that people don't know what's going on. So in some ways, this is a little bit of a release to just say, hey, you people who already know each other and work well together, you don't have to be an official town committee. You can work on, get together and work on some of this stuff um that that you care about. We don't, that's, that's great. And then any, you know, we all receive, we're all happy to receive emails at any point about important issues.
And you, Allison, you can bring those uh, those historic resources items to the table for the twenty-third of February. Uh, you know, and put an agenda and we can decide.
Oh, that's what I'm saying. I think that's solvable. They they've been mostly sort of just, they they communicate over email some and just update. There's, I don't actually see an issue there. People in town can stay connected on these issues without them being, without the burden of this official standing committee, which carries with it all of these statutory requirements um that sometimes aren't necessary. So people meeting as groups to work on these issues, we don't, the select board can't tell anybody not to do that and we're happy to hear from people that have suggestions.
I agree, Allison. I'll also add to that to comments that, you know, if if a committee is working on something that doesn't need town staff today, I would presume they're working on something that's gonna require town staff downstream. If they're not, they're not a PR group, but if they are, fine, they'll do it. As long as we know about it, that's fine. But if 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 they're not working on on our priorities or related to our priorities, then it, they have to affect town staff at some point in time, to Audra's point. That's where it comes from. Otherwise, if they're creating pamphlets and exaggerating, making pamphlets on their own.
Or applying for grants, that's a big one. Like I, I can't have, I just can't have groups applying for grants and that's happened in the past a lot, you know, and it's with great intentions. A group has gone and applied for a grant and then I've been stuck administering it, which is even more work than applying for it.
Right.
Yeah, that's, that's just a one example of the kinds of things where everyone's very much trying to be helpful. It's very appreciated, appreciate, it's appreciated, sorry, I might get tired, um, appreciated. But, you know, when it comes, there's just a lot of work that I think that um, a lot of people don't see or understand that um, comes along with all of this stuff.
Right. Well, I think, like I said, Allison and and I know Allison, uh, I was listening to Allison and Taylor, and I think you were kind of saying the same thing. We're trying to, we're trying to communicate that to the public so they don't think we're doing this when not, we're just trying to get it organized as quickly as possible. A lot of people out there are listening, well, you know, uh, how do we do it? Just just talk to us. Uh, let us know what they are, what the issues are, we'll bring them to the table in a select board meeting and it doesn't, again, it doesn't have to be just committees. There are a lot of other people out there who need to be engaged at the same time. And I know people who didn't want to bring things, they sold me the table because, well, I'm not part of X Y Z committee. Well, you don't have to be. You you should be able to, you should be able to just come to us on February, when we put on the February twenty-third or March, whatever, a select board meeting and say, is this a priority, select board, yes, no, in between? And then we could assign to a committee or we could do a task group or we could do all these things. I think between now and July, I don't know a lot more about how well this works and how well it doesn't. To your point, Mark, I agree with you. There's the Opera House Committee does different things than does other committees and many of the things you said, you know what? Good, let's keep them going, you know.
I don't know anything. I mean, for example, I know from Mark, I know almost nothing about the Opera House. Things about the op, people from the public ask me all the time, why is this or why is that? And I I really don't know. Nothing from the Opera House, except for these fee schedules, really ever ends up on a select board agenda. We have no, I mean, I'm sure if I really wanted to get involved and I tried harder, I probably could and I could ask Mark lots and I'm not saying anybody's being excluded, but it does sometimes when it's all within a committee, the Opera House Committee, which is like the only one that never transitioned to live streaming, um, it does sort of rob everybody else of their opportunity to have these things discussed you know, by non-experts in a public forum too. So but probably the Opera House Committee does all kinds of things I don't realize and I'll end up saying they should start meeting. I don't know.
Right, no, and I think we're gonna develop as we go along. I would like to suggest that we've been talking about this for almost three months. And to Audra's point, I think we need to just take a step and then we find out next week it's the wrong step, we can recover from that. I don't think it is.
Can I make one more point? There's a lot of stuff we're working on where I need, there, there are lots of people who I've, you know, worked with, who are volunteers, who are on committees that in any given, you know, project or thing that I, that, you know, me and other town staff are working on, we could really use guidance, opinions from some of these people that we've worked with, but the committee structure isn't the appropriate way to get it. So I guess just having a little breathing space from the formal committee structure just makes it easier for me and staff to sort of reach out to groups of people informally who have expertise or valuable insight or could help us with something. Um, but doing it through a committee is not the most appropriate way to do it.
We also lost some really valuable committee members when, that didn't like the live streaming, um, you know, requirement. And I reached out to some of those people individually because, yes, their their input was really, really valuable, but I felt it was necessary as, you know, a formal committee for it to be livestreamed and some people didn't like that. But it's like there, to Audra's point, there are ways for people, there's an a, an appropriate sort of item for a town committee and sometimes a way that it's better accomplished outside of that. Um.
Let's, um, we could, I think we're, Mark, go ahead. Let's make it quick.
One more thing, I I'm just gonna say, there's some questions here on the side about, you know, should the committees just um just not ask for town support? And my suggestion is, you know, I know that technically town committees, you know, should livestream and stuff like that. By the way, the reason the Opera House Committee hasn't livestreamed is because they haven't met.
Right.
Uh, so they haven't met. Um, so my, my suggestion is, is that we'll put the official committee stuff on hiatus, but if groups of people want to do their own Zoom get-togethers, then I recommend it. And if something comes out of it and somebody says, hey, I got together with a group of friends and said, we've got this suggestion you might want to run. Then I would, I would suggest it that way.
Yep, not a problem, Mark. I I I think that these people, by the way, any group out there, a neighborhood of people could come together and discuss something and want to bring it to the select board. The key is they're gonna have to come through the select board to say, yes, this is gonna be a formalized. And by the way, that activity should have a scope, it should have a schedule. And and it's just like we did with C D O C on the um, on the Tenerife thing and it worked famously and we and we'll need most every one of the committees to do some of that stuff. I I agree with everything that's been said. So what I'm hearing is general consensus that, okay, July first, we'll put this hiatus on, we will immediately, you know, start listening to anybody who wants to talk to us about initiatives that we should consider. They will be in some prioritized nature brought to the select board for decision about yes or no or in between or definition and then how it should be executed or not. And that's, that's as simple, it's it's as simple as that. Let's not make this too complicated. I know, remember, we're trying to change something here that has been ongoing in this town for many, many, many years. And and it it changed doesn't sit well and there's gonna be some, there's gonna be some bumps. To your point, Mark, I agree with you. There's gonna be some bumps because there's some things that are ongoing that Allison mentioned. I don't know what's going on in the Opera House either. I didn't know we're doing, we're helping, you know, presentation for the library. There's nothing wrong with those things. There's nothing at all. Uh, it's just that we just need to know about them. So they could, they, they, they are an um, an adjunct to the select board. They're, they do, they are advisory to the select board. And and we should at least know what's going on. So I think we should, I think I'm hearing consensus. We've lost Jenna right now because she had to go, but um, that we're putting on hiatus, but till July first, we revisit it around July first and see how it's going or sooner if it's a problem. Uh, we'll, we'll, we'll keep our pulse on things. So uh, if any town requests are made for meetings, we're we're in hiatus right now and we'll, we'll probably be addressing some of these things on the the twenty-third of February and the ninth of March and that's fine. That's the way we'll go. Cool. Um, to managers' report, besides committees, um, Audra, do you have anything you want to report?
Um, I think everybody's heard enough from me.
Yeah, I have to say it's getting a little late, so I'll over to select board reports. Mr. Mark.
Uh, I only have uh, two things really quickly. Um, number one, the COVID rates in Knox County and elsewhere on the country are going down. Um, the vaccinations are getting more out there, but Um, the vaccinations are getting more out there, but please continue to be safe, we still have a long way to go, we need to cure this. Um, I just, you know, I have more people that I know passed away recently from COVID, I've had a lot of people that have been through my life have gone through it, um, so it's, 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 you know, close to home in terms of you know, the the world I used to work, music business I used to work in, so please be safe, please be careful, please wear masks. Second, something I mentioned to Bob earlier, this is for our two town representatives of the uh, midcoast waste um, situation, that would be Bob and Allison. Uh, I had to go there last week and and uh, for put in some recycling, also recycle some electronic equipment that of course, uh, gratefully paid for for the opportunity to to recycle it in the proper way. Uh, but I had to go to a bank to get cash because these days, um, nobody's carrying cash, nobody wants to take cash. Um, I've set up with friends, uh, you know, helped friends set up in a matter of a half an hour. Um. Uh, credit card systems through Square that you can set up in in about ten minutes and it'll work. I don't understand why the there are wastewater, uh, or waste um collection eight place does not accept cards instead of cash, especially these days where it's safer, more appropriate. Uh, I think it's something that should should be expedited as soon as we can.
Um, yeah, and that's been talked about, and it's agree, and I agreed upon goal and it was going to happen this year, but there are a lot of um changes that had to be made over at the transfer station and these people, I mean, talk about frontline workers, essential workers that are like in the trenches, having to, you know, do a lot and make a lot of changes during COVID. A lot of the staff is older, um, and so when you ask them to change massive amounts of their operation and then also ask them at the same time to learn a totally new skill that requires training and requires more touching and it was just too, too much to ask of everybody at this time, it is um basic miracle that that facility has been able to stay open, you look at the, we have a really small workforce and most of our towns, we've gone to like a staggered shift schedule with the, like the Public Works Department, for example, we've, we've been able to split up the shift so that
Mm-hmm.
some, you know, if if one group gets sick, then we'll still have some others, we don't have um, enough staff over at the transfer station. Um, a lot of the staff is in the high risk group, so there, it's, it has been really heroic over there, I do totally agree with you about the credit cards, but um you look at what a lot of other places have done in terms of shutting down recycling, shutting down services, um that I'm incredibly proud of what the transfer station employees have been able to do during this time, so it just is not the right um, during COVID wasn't, wasn't the time to all of a sudden force them to to learn, um.
Has anybody ever asked us that, because the person I dealt with, I asked about it and he says, that would be great to have.
Oh, yeah, they, they, they.
It's on the agenda, Mark, we just haven't gotten to it yet.
I just, it's just something I, you know. And I think it would be a great.
We have a brand new manager, so we have a brand new manager this year, so there's a lot of stuff like making sure that the quarry doesn't overflow, you know, leachate into Lily Pond and um, but it's definitely been talked about, it's on the the.
On the radar.
And uh.
Uh, Taylor, do you have anything?
All set tonight, thank you.
Awesome.
Okay, so, so, um, just really briefly, we have started on some of the um, ramping up of um, public engagement for the uh, river related um, and coastal resilience grant funding that we have. Uh, last week, we did sort of a kickoff meeting with some um government agency, um, like people like uh, the, from NOAA, NIFWIF, um Coastal Mountain Land Trust, Midcoast Conservancy, some of sort of the expert environmental organizations as well. Um, as a few um, key people from around town, basically to give an uh, overview of where um, the work that's been done so far with the National Fish and Wildlife Foundation Coastal Resilience Grant, and then to also get input from them on sort of what the best public input um process would look like going forward. Uh, we got a lot of good suggestions about groups that we should talk to, things that should be considered. Um, but also wanting to extend that um, sort of opportunity to the select board and to anybody else to talk about you know, at some point, feel free to reach out to to Adra or to me or to Sri from a coast conservancy to talk about um what, what the, you know, the process might look like from your perspective or questions that you might have. Also, um, one thing we talked about is just extending an open invitation to really any group that would like to have um, somebody come and present about sort of what the town knows so far about um the the river and how that relates to climate change and watershed. What we know so far, what we're still looking at and where we need input from the community, so anybody listening wants me um, to come and speak, I'm happy to do that, and then sometimes Sri from a coast conservancy will be joining me and also um, Hallie Arno, who is um, a student at the College of the Atlantic and the, working with the Watershed School, she's been working on some different um public outreach options, she actually did a little exercise with some watershed students the other day, so um, that's just an open invitation and um yeah, that's, that's basically it.
Thanks, Allison, um, I don't have anything to add either, um, so with that, we can um leave select board and convene, well, not convene really, but uh, enter uh, executive session at ten oh seven P M.
We need a motion for that?
Uh, yes.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call vote.
What is the, I'm sorry, what is the reason for this?
What is the reason for it?
What, what did it say pursuant to what?
Executive session.
I know, but what was the, what is the need to go into executive session?
To, I don't understand your question.
It's on the agenda.
Legal rights and duties, do you want the exact topic?
Yes, please.
Oh, I'm sorry.
With the litigation, Rock, Rockport's litigation against us around the.
Yeah, pursuant to M R S A four oh five six E, legal rights and duties. So with that, roll call vote, Taylor?
Alright.
Mark?
I.
Allison?
No.
Bob, I, okay, we're going to go into executive session, let's ensure that we have nobody in the attendees, um.
Hold on, I'm just going to take a second.